Good morning. The legal voters of the town of Newfane, Vermont are hereby notified and warned that pursuant to Title 17, subset, Section 2655, they are to meet at the Union Hall in Newfane, Vermont on Tuesday, March 5, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. to act upon the articles below. And here we are. Carol Hesselbeck, our town clerk, is today's presiding officer and will open the polls. The polls are now open. Don't give the people a hard time when they ask which primary ballot you want. You only get one. You have to choose, and they have to make a record. It's state law. A couple of housekeeping. There is a fire exit there, and there's another one back here. We hope we don't need them. The restrooms are in back to the right, but you can't access them through the door behind the poll takers. Okay? And this is a polling place, so there is no electioneering inside the hall. Okay? That includes no political literature buttons or political materials that can be displayed inside, but you are allowed to bring a cheat sheet into the poll when you vote, as long as you take it out with you. And this meeting is being recorded by Brattleboro Community Television. It will be available online at brattlebortv.org. For anyone who wishes to speak at the meeting, and I hope everybody does, you need to stand up, state your name, speak directly into the microphone. There is one microphone that is here, and it will record you so that people will be able to hear you in this room and also on the recording. And I am going to give preference to people who come up to the microphone. If coming up to the microphone is difficult because of mobility issues, we will try to get a microphone to you. Okay? And what else? If democracy makes you hungry, you can find food provided by the Newbrook PTO in back. Donations for their offerings are greatly accepted for enrichment programs in the classrooms, so please donate generously and eat heartily. Are there any non-voters or non-residents here? Sheriff Anderson, a young person. Everybody else? Are there any first-time attendees, voting, attending? Could you please stand and introduce yourself?
Hi, everyone. I'm Walter Hagador.
Walter?
Hagador.
Hagador.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
And?
I'm Sarah Ratchford.
Sarah Ratchford.
Hi, I'm Amy Worth.
Amy Worth.
Emmett Mandavi.
Emmett Mandavi. Thank you. Someone who grew up here. I'm sorry? Ingrid Berdecker. Close, close. Yes.
I'm in the Stevie Hall with Stacey Allen.
Stevie Hall.
C.V.
C.V.
Yes, so does the band.
Okay. Stevie Hall. Anyone else?
I'm John.
I'm John.
I'm Sam Dutton.
Oh, Sam Dutton, all the way from Brookline, now Newfane. And Austin Rice, our videographer. All right. Yes.
Hi, I'm Susan All.
Hi, Susan. Welcome, Susan All. I want to tell people in the balcony, it's really hard to hear you, so if you have things to say, I highly recommend you come down and use the microphone. Okay. So that's everybody new. Welcome to our town meeting. The town report is dedicated, where is it? I've had it. I've already lost it. No, mine has all my notes in it. Yeah, dedicated to volunteers who keep this place going, all right? And if you look on pages 86 and 87, you'll see the names of elected officers and some of the many volunteers who keep our town running, and your name could be there, too. All right? All you have to do is step up and volunteer. So I see that Emily is here now. I don't know, we'll talk in a minute. Do you need to, are you going to wait?
I'm here, but you can tell me you're waiting for a sentence or a call.
Great, okay. All right. So we do have our, and here's one of them, right? So as soon as our entire Vermont delegation is here, we will see if you want to hear from him. But right now, our Wyndham County Sheriff is here, Sheriff Mark Anderson. And if there is no objection, first of all, if you've read your town report, you know that there are some proposed changes happening in the sheriff's department. And if there's no objection, I think Sheriff Anderson would come and tell you a little bit about them briefly. Hearing none.
Can you hear me all right? Yes. All right. Thank you for hearing from me today. I always appreciate the town meeting tradition. Thank you to the select board as well. So one of the things we're talking about with my department, with the towns in Wyndham County, is how do we do regionalized policing better? Everyone knows for at least the last 30 years how the sheriff's department has contracted to provide law enforcement services. I call it a 60% solution. So we're trying to say, how do we do it better and make it more affordable? I think those are easy problem statements to get behind or solutions to get behind, and so the proof is in the pudding. What we are working on right now is what I call my three-year plan that we could probably do by July, if you trust that I know what I'm talking about. And I am pragmatic, so I say we need to have public process. And so while I have an idea that I think we could execute come July 1st, what we're trying to do is bring the towns in to say, how do we have governance of this type of a system? How do we develop funding to deploy this type of a system? What I hear frequently throughout Wyndham County is that we don't have enough access to policing. The contract bond will basically create silos, so each town has its level of service that its select board will negotiate. It kind of creates this disparity of what's expected from town to town to town. So we're trying to build a system that says, hey, we collectively want access to the service. It's expensive to live in Vermont. How do we apply the resources, the limited resources that we have, to get the access to the emergency services that we want without costing an arm and a leg? So that's very quickly my speech on regionalized policing. I think the one analogy I'll use is to describe road graders. Every town with a dirt road needs to access a road grader. Does every town need to own a road grader? And so we're trying to say, how do we gain access without having the significant investment? And if you are interested, I encourage you to connect with your select board. You can certainly connect with my office as well, but we are trying to work through the town's government to say, how do we keep local control part of the conversation while I provide a service? Happy to answer any questions. I am here for another 20 minutes before I have to depart to the next town, and I'm happy to step outside and talk with people because I talk loud and distract people in town meetings. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. And while we're thanking people, I'd like the board and the town clerk to please introduce themselves, and then we can thank them for the work they have done this past year. Go ahead.
I'm Angela Litchfield. I'm the chair for the town this year. I'm Gollum.
Jeff Chevalier.
Katie Johnson-Appleton.
Mike Fitzpatrick.
Carol Hesselbeck, your town clerk. And thank you. Thank you very much. You know where to find them every other Tuesday night, at least. Monday, Monday night. Okay. As always, we are going to use the civic Bible, Riot Roberts Rules of Order, because that's state law. We can change Roberts' rules, but we cannot change state law. Roberts' Rules is parliamentary procedure designed for an assembly to conduct its business fairly and orderly, and my job is to facilitate that. All right? So you must be, I must recognize you. The moderator has to recognize you to speak. Please stand up. I'm going to say this a lot of times, but if you just stand up, say your name, and speak at the microphone. Address your comments to the moderator. It keeps things calm. A motion must be made, seconded, and repeated by the moderator before discussion of an article can begin. When there are many people who want to talk all about the same issue, I will do my best to recognize you in the order in which you've raised your hands, but I will also ask for, when one person has spoken, I will ask, does someone who wants to speak have a different point of view, so that we get the most varied conversation and we can make the most informed vote? All right? And we'll either vote when nobody else wants to speak, or if somebody who has been recognized calls the question, and that requires a two-thirds vote to pass. A point of order is not the same as a point of information. A point of information is you need to know more. A point of order is, I've made a mistake. You think I've made a mistake. I probably have made a mistake. All right? So it interrupts the proceedings, and if I have made an error, there's a way for you to appeal my ruling, and I will help you gladly go through that process. But a point of information is just that. You ask the question to me, and I will field it for you, to whomever we think can provide the information. Colonel Roberts, bless him, has a lot more rules, okay? Knowing them should not be a barrier to your participation. If you have a question, if you want to do something and you don't know how to go about it, ask me. I might know, and if I don't, I know how to find out what Colonel Roberts thinks and says. You have been graciously sending me to moderator school for the last 17 years. I'm catching on. Finally, there's some green papers with the basics of Roberts' Rules. And I really ask you to, I know that when you want to speak in public, it can kind of thrum out everything else in your brain because you're nervous. It's not something you do every day, but try hard to listen to each other. Nicholas Kristof of The New York Times wrote, "It should be possible to believe, it should be possible both to believe deeply in the rightness of one's own cause and to hear out the other side. Civility is not a sign of weakness, but of civilization." So we have a long tradition of civilized debate in Vermont and town meeting. We know, in Newfane, we know how to be passionate and polite. Article 1 is being voted on. Oh, boy, I could have used bigger-point type. Article 2. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane pay taxes for the ensuing year on a quarterly basis due on the 15th of August, October, January, and April, late charge for interest being at the rate of 0.5% per month for the current fiscal year and 0.75% per month for each month thereafter until paid? Is there a motion?
It's a move.
Tom Bedell.
Tom Bedell moves the motion. Is there a second? David Cotton seconds it. So now I restate it. It has been moved and seconded. Article 2. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane pay taxes for the ensuing year on a quarterly basis due on the 15th of August, October, January, and April, late charge for interest being at the rate of 0.5% per month for the current fiscal year and 0.75% per month for each year thereafter until paid? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. You ready for the vote? Okay. Your voting and I vote means you are in favor of the article, and no vote means not. Article 2, as read, shall the voters of the town of Newfane pay taxes for the ensuing year on a quarterly basis due on the 15th of August, October, January, and April, the late charge for interest being at the rate of 0.5% per month for the current fiscal year and 0.75% per month for each month thereafter until paid? All those in favor of this article, please indicate so by saying aye. And those opposed by saying nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, and Article 2 passes. Article 3. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize the select board to sell or otherwise convey property acquired through tax sale proceedings? Is there a motion?
Neil Pelso.
Thank you, Neil. Is there a second?
A second. Joyce, stand down.
Thank you, Joyce. Article 2, Article 3 has been moved and seconded. It's time to vote. Are there any questions about this article? And is there any discussion? I didn't think so. Article 3. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize the select board to sell or otherwise convey property acquired through the tax sale proceedings? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. The article passes. Article 4. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize general fund expenditures for the town and highway operating expenses of $1,699,999, of which $1,363,409 shall be raised by taxes and $327,590 by the, by non-tax revenues? Is there a motion? Lindsey Bertram moves it, and the second is Beth Lee Goddett. And I will reread it, and then we can discuss it. Shall the, Article 4. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize general fund expenditures for the town and highway operating expenses of $1,690,999, of which $1,363,409 shall be raised by taxes and $327,590 by non-tax revenues? Is there any discussion?
Where does the non-tax money come from?
The question is, where does the non-tax money come from? I think that is a request for information, and we have Missy Brown, our town treasurer, to answer it.
So if you look on page 12, you'll see a whole list of the non-tax revenues. There's current use, there's liquor license, town clerk revenue, tax bill copies, zoning.
And I would be remiss if I didn't remind dog owners that town clerk revenue includes the $10 for licensing your dog before April 1st, or they're delinquent. All right. Is there any discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. We're ready for the vote. On Article 4. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize general fund expenditures for town and highway operating expenses of $1,699,999, of which $1,363,409 shall be raised by taxes and $327,590 by non-tax revenues? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Nay.
And those opposed by saying nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Article 4 passes. Article 5. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize highway operating expenses of $98,000, of which $98,000 shall be raised by taxes to hire a new employee? This figure includes wages, benefits, and insurance for the highway department. Is there a motion?
Motion, Beth Lee Goddett.
Beth Lee Goddett moves Article 5. Is there a second?
Second.
Joyce Van Pamela has seconded.
I don't like.
And is there any discussion?
I'm sort of an independent.
Yes, sir, in back, Mr. Hall. Could you stand up, please?
I'd like to know why the new employee is being hired.
Mr. Hall asks, why is there a new employee being hired? Sadly, our highway, the head of our highway department is not well and not here. So I'm going to put this over to someone on the select board.
What it was, they've had a discussion, a lot of the guys getting older are going to be to the point that they're going to be retiring here in a couple more years, probably. We've always tried to hire somebody a little bit younger to go on the road crew. We always used to have five people that used to work on the roads, and then went back to four. In today's world, Jay spends most of his time getting grants and a lot of paperwork. I mean, he does help out with the plowing and when he can, but he's in the office a lot, too. We do have a part-time guy that does step in when we need him, but I guess we were thinking it'd be nice, maybe, if we could find somebody else that would step up that could help, that when one of these other guys do retire, we're not in a situation where short manpower. I guess, you know, the $98,000, is it the real number? I'm not quite sure, you know, because we do have a part-time guy, which we won't be having, and it'll be, some of that money will be going into this, but it could go up as high as 98, probably, with the wages and insurance and everything else they put on us.
Is there any further discussion? Any other questions? Mr. Hall, was that sufficient answer?
Yes.
Thank you. Hearing, no further discussion. We're ready for the vote. You look, Ken Estey, you look confused. No question? Okay. Article 5, so this is for the vote. Article 5. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize highway operating expenses of $98,000, of which $98,000 shall be raised by taxes to hire a new employee? This figure includes wages, benefits, and insurance for the highway department. All those in favor of Article 5, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Article 5 passes. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize capital fund expenditures of $420,000, of which $413,500 shall be raised by taxes and $6,500 by non-tax revenues? Is there a motion? We can't go any further unless somebody moves this. Joyce Van Pamela moved it. Ken Estey has seconded it. Thank you. So Article 6 is moved and seconded and reads, shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize capital fund expenditures of $420,000, of which $413,500 shall be raised by taxes and $6,500 by non-tax revenues? Is there any discussion? Quiet group tonight, or I think today. I think we're ready for the vote? Yeah? Okay, Article 6, you're voting. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize capital fund expenditures of $420,000, of which, $420,000, of which $98,000 shall, no, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. Let's go to Article 6. We passed Article 5. Article 6. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize capital fund expenditures of $420,000, of which $413,500 shall be raised by taxes and $6,500 by non-tax revenues? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Article 6 passes. Moving right along. Article 7. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize general fund expenditures for a debt service fund in the amount of $68,555, of which $68,555 shall be raised by taxes? Is there a motion? Patty Johnson, thank you. You're moving it. Yes? Is there a second? Thank you, Neil Pelso. Okay. I'm going to read it again, and then we can discuss it. Okay? Article 7. Yeah, Article 7. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize general fund expenditures for a debt services fund in the amount of $68,555, of which $68,555 shall be raised by taxes? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. I take that back. Is there any discussion? Does anybody want to know what this is? Or you all read the report? What would you like? Patty Johnson says, what is it? Everybody else is ready to pass it. She wants to know. Does anybody want to explain what this is? Our town treasurer.
So the debt service used to actually be in the capital fund, in the capital reserve fund. It didn't make any sense why it was in the reserve fund, so the auditor and I discussed it, and we moved it into its own separate fund. It's just simply to pay the loans for the equipment, the bridge loan or the bond, and the excavator lease payment is also in there, but it has to be warranted as a separate article.
Which is coming up. Thank you. So, to make sure everybody heard, this was a, an accounting change. And it's separating capital expenses, it's separating debt service funds from the capital funds, so we know how much we're spending more clearly on capital investment and on debt service. Okay. Ken Estey.
I want to question, when do we expect revenue from the gravel pit? Because as I'm looking at this, it's $44,000 in terms of gravel pit purchase principal.
And what page are you on on this town report for the gravel pit?
The debt service on page 21.
Debt service on page 21.
Of the gravel pit purchase principal, looking at $44,000.
Yeah? Right, right. So there is, that's the interest being paid on the gravel pit. And Ken's question is, when are we going to be able to take sand out?
Yes.
Right? And, do we have an answer? State your name.
Ann Dolus. We, there was a holdup in getting our Act 250 applications submitted because of a problem with the engineer's report, so we are getting that corrected as we speak. Everything else has been completed. Oh, sorry. And actually, if you'd stand up, I think. Thank you. There was, there is a holdup with getting the Act 250 application submitted because of an error that was made with the engineer's report. That is in the process of being corrected. It should be resolved within the next couple of weeks, and then our application will be ready to be submitted. I cannot describe to you the disappointment of all of us who have been working on this, that this, that this has occurred and that we still do not have our application in. However, our application looks very clean, and we feel very heartened that it will probably sail through. So within the next few weeks, if not months, we should be able, in a position to submit the application. I hope that very soon we will actually be able to extract sand from the pit.
Any further discussion or questions? I'm sorry, is there another?
Instead of concrete, maybe, something?
Yeah, you really need to project. Sound goes up, and we don't hear it.
Okay. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear her?
Okay. Okay. What is the relationship between $68,565 in the article and then $94,000? What is the relationship between $68,555 in the article and then $94,222 on pages 21 and 24? I just, I got a quick feeling where the amount in the article shows up in the budget.
So, the question is, where does this, 68, the 68,555, $68,555 show up in the budget? And we have our treasurer to explain it.
So, the excavator lease payment, which is the next article coming up, you have to include that. That's what's included in the town report. But CAT requires that the lease agreement be worn separately each year. That's why it can't be included in the debt service.
So it's a, did everybody hear, it's a contractual requirement from CAT, as in Caterpillar?
Caterpillar.
The Caterpillar Corporation, from whom we, the town of New Fane rents an excavator, that we vote on that separately. So, and does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Is there any more discussion of Article Seven? Hearing none? You're ready for the vote. Here it comes. Article Seven. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane authorize general fund expenditures for a debt service fund in the amount of $68,555, of which $68,555 shall be raised by taxes? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Article Seven passes. Article Eight. Before we go, I don't know, how much longer can you guys hang? So we're waiting for Senator Harrison. Do you want to start, if there's no objection? So we have our own Representative Emily Long here and State Senator Nader Hashim, and if there is no objection, we would let them have the floor to tell us about what's going on in Montpelier, and if Senator Harrison arrives in time, she'll join them. Is there... If there's, if there is no objection, I'm not hearing any objection. Easy to get tense tonight. Thank you so much for coming. I know you've had a busy day today.
Thank you. Grabbing this microphone. I feel very fortunate to be here with one, and hopefully both of my senators. All of you know that we have new senators here, and we're lucky to be able to work with them. I'm Emily Long. I am a New Fane resident, as many of you know, and I serve, and there's our other senator, who I knew would come on time. I'll let them introduce themselves, but Senator Harrison and Senator Hashim are with me today. Pulled you right in at the last possible second. All right. So, lots going on in the legislature this year. We are at an incredibly fast pace. I think, I've served up there, I think I'm in my 10th year now, and I think I've never seen it as busy as it is, or maybe as stressful. Things are quite challenging in the legislature. Federal funds running low and out, all our pandemic relief funds. You know, we're trying to now make sure that they're all being spent across the state, but that makes it much more challenging as we move forward, so we're being very cautious about that. We have a lot of good work we're doing in the House. We're working very hard on modernization of Act 250 right now. We have not passed that yet. Next week is our policy crossover week, and the following week after that is our money crossover week, so we've got to get bills moving across to the other body. So we'll be sending ours over to the Senate. The Senate will be sending theirs to us. And as I said, Act 250 modernization is one of those important ones. We still continue to stay focused on housing. This year, we have tackled something that we, as legislators, hear a lot about, healthcare. It is a challenge for us to be able to come up with a solution to the problems that you're all facing with healthcare, we're all facing with healthcare, and health insurance. Costs go up. Access is challenging, to say the least. We do have a state that is well insured, but unfortunately, very underinsured as well. So with co-pays and, and the cost sharing and all of that, it is just making it more and more challenging. So in the healthcare committee in the House, we're looking at a Medicaid expansion program. I don't think we're going to be able to pull it off this year. We're trying to figure out how to access the federal funds that we need to help support this, so that more people have access to health insurance that they can afford. But it may turn into a study. It looks like it's probably going to go into a study, and then we'll take it up next year once we get a few more answers, but that's another really important one. Something that's near and dear to me, I'll say before I turn it over to the senators, neonicotinoids is a huge issue in this state protecting our pollinators. I have been hoping for this bill to move for years, and we are, looks like we are moving it this year, finally, and hopefully sending it over to the Senate. Hopefully we'll get their support as well. We need to make sure that we're limiting the use. We'd like to completely eliminate it. We're not able to completely eliminate it, but limiting the use severely. New York has done this. Quebec has done it. Time for us to do it, too, to protect our pollinators. So that one's really important to me, too. So lots of other legislation about. Hand it over to the other two.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, I'm Wendy Harrison. Just got back from Mooresboro because I wanted to visit there, and just driving along Route 30, I was reminded again about the floods. So I want to talk first about the floods, and then I'll go into my committees and specific bills. Obviously, we had tremendous flooding, not only in the summer, but also in the winter. That flooding is going to continue with the additional storms. So I'm very much an advocate for long-term planning and management. All of, obviously, the river is connected. The river doesn't know political boundaries, so we need watershed-level management of rivers. And the Senate has a bill that is proposing that. The governor is opposing that bill, and so if any of you have telephones or wish to engage in this, it would be really helpful for residents to support this. And what this is, is we already have people who work on river corridors in the state, but we need more of them, and we need the state to have the authority and the responsibility of managing these river corridors. And that's a longer conversation, so I hope we can have public meetings about that as we go forward. But the, just the destruction is horrendous, both in costs. It's going to be up to a billion dollars in, just in costs. That's property costs. And that doesn't count the trauma that folks have of going through these storms. And there are things we can do. In Brattleboro, we have one floodplain restoration finished, and then another one underway, and we hosted folks from all over the state to come and see what we have done, because it really does work. There are things you can do. You can slow the water. You can give it places to go. You can give places for the debris to settle. So there are things you can do. We're not powerless at all in this. We just need to have the will and the organization to do it. So that's enough about river corridors. Fiscally, because, and the amount that they, the dollar amount for the additional staff, I think it's 4.5 million. We could probably do it for less, but when you look at the 4.5 million versus a billion in damage, not even counting damage to people, it's really minimal, and it's just, it's just smart to prevent damage rather than know it's going to happen and have to fix it later. So I serve on two committees. All senators do. I serve on economic development, housing, and general affairs is one committee, and the other one is institutions. In the housing, the economic development committee, we've been working a lot on housing, and we are working on the modernization of Act 250, which this is really a historic moment, because the environmentalists, the developers, the business folks, as the chamber represents, they are all agreed on the general outline of how to proceed in Act 250, to change it. And it's basically tiers, and I won't go into that detail. That can, we can talk about that another time. And it's also in the update that Senator Hashim and I have produced. But our committee worked on that for four weeks and passed out a bill, and there are at least three other committees working on that. So hopefully, we will take advantage of this opportunity. The implementation of that could be years. And so one thing that our committee did was we put in interim ways and incentives for housing in particular to be developed. So we put in a provision where you can build up to 75 homes without an Act 250 permit in a place that has water and sewer and zoning, which is a huge increase in what there is now. And we also changed some of the appeal mechanisms, because that's what holds projects up many times, are the appeals. There still will be an appeal, but we're trying to make it, there's a higher threshold to get to an appeal, and then once you are in that process, we're trying to make the process quicker by adding a judge to the docket and giving the judiciary a goal. We can't tell them what to do, but we can give them a goal on process. We're doing other things in economic development. If you heard about the Global Foundries news, which is pretty exciting, that was possible because of some money that we put in last year, so that's, that's very cool. On the institutions, that committee deals with the capital bill, which funds things like water, sewer, stormwater. But the thing that has really caught folks' attention this year is the potential closing of the Salisbury Fish Hatchery. And our committee put, really, and this was a bipartisan effort, passed out a bill just this last Friday to keep the hatchery open through 2027. It has water quality issues, but the permit goes until 2027, so we think we should keep it open until then, and that gives us time to work on the issues, because it's a really important fish hatchery. It's where all of the brood stock of our trout come from. So that is where I will stop. Thank you very much for having me here.
Thank you. Hi, New Fane. It's good to be here, and I'm grateful for the invitation to come and speak for a little bit. So my name is Nader Hashim. I am serving as one of your state senators. I live right across in Dumerson. And as was mentioned, we serve on two committees. I serve as the vice chair of the Judiciary Committee, and I also serve as a member of the Education Committee. Outside of the standing committees, I also serve as a member of the Judicial Nominating Board, which is essentially the entity that performs the hiring process for judicial and quasi-judicial job positions, and then the names are sent to the governor. And just a quick local note about the Judicial Nominating Board. There was a recently confirmed judge who's now working right across the street in the Civil Division, and after the confirmation process was done, I did make sure to mention that not only is the courthouse a beautiful place, but there's also a very great general store right across the street with plenty of really good coffee. So the judge is aware of that. So I just wanted to highlight a few of the bills that I've been working on in both of my committees, and I figured that I would first start with the Judiciary Committee. And I've been primarily focused on trying to create technical changes to increase the efficiency of different hearings and different procedures that happen in our courtrooms. I've also worked on increasing staffing capacity and workload capacity, as well as a number of bills that focus on protecting victims of violent crimes. So specifically, some of those bills include removing the requirement that victims of violent felonies, such as aggravated domestic assault, testify in front of the person who assaulted them in pre-trial, hold without bail hearings. This is a bill that protects both victims and increases public safety. There's also a bill that we recently passed, which removes the requirement for children who are victims of cruelty to a child to testify in front of their abuser. Under current law, we do not require child victims of sexual assault to testify, and now this protection extends to children who were victims of physical abuse as well. And for those wondering, the age cutoff is 12. And another large topic of conversation has been the judiciary backlog, and I'm just going to share a very quick story that, you know, I won't share anything that's identifying, but in my former career as a state trooper, in 2017, I investigated a non-violent felony. And to put in perspective as to how bad the backlog is at the moment, that case was resolved about two months ago. So, you know, at the beginning of the legislative session, we were talking about the judiciary backlog, and ironically, I had to leave one of those hearings to come down and testify, because I was involved in the investigation. And so, you know, what we've heard is that at the current rate in which we are resolving cases, we'll be out of the backlog within 20 to 30 years. Yeah, yeah, it's not great. But in order to help address this, and also to ensure we're upholding Vermonters' rights to a speedy trial, we did recently pass a bill which creates three new judge positions. And one of those judge positions will be used to create a statewide drug docket, which I also think will help in addressing the opioid crisis. And so I'll move on to education. And when it comes to education, I really try to focus on not just the short-term effects of the policies we pass, but also the long-term, and, you know, how it will affect not just the kids, but also teachers, staff, and families in the communities. So one of the bills that has been a top priority for me involves making improvements to the governance and logistics of career technical centers. And we actually heard from Mr. Drewk from WW Building Supply just last week about CTEs in Vermont. And for those who don't know, CTEs are places where kids can go to learn a trade or a skill that will not just come in handy, but will likely guarantee that they'll have a job in one of the many trade careers that are severely lacking personnel. Some of the changes that we've worked on include changing the funding mechanism so that the budget will go through AOE and take into consideration the average of the past year of tuition, rather than the last three years. But we are still waiting for the actual language from the Agency of Education. There's been a lot of challenges in trying to get, trying to get good policies that work with what we are trying to do. And I'm not saying that to disparage the AOE. It's just, there's, there's a lot of challenges. I'll just, I'll just say that. And so the, one of the other major changes for CTEs is to establish partnerships between these schools and places of higher education, the state colleges. And there's two main reasons for this. The first is that there are a number of CTEs that are at capacity for physical space. You know, we heard testimony from one CTE that had to turn away 200 students who wanted to come into their center to learn, you know, different trades. And the other part is that partnering with colleges will allow access to additional facilities on these college campuses. And so this will help with, you know, not putting the burden on CTEs or school districts to build out their facilities when there are nearby facilities that can be used in partnership with these colleges. And the other piece of that is also that this will allow, I'm sorry, another part of the policy change is allowing students to transfer credits that are gained in their CTE to these colleges, so that they can more quickly and affordably gain, excuse me, gain higher degrees for whatever trade that they've entered. Now, another less complicated bill that I've worked on involves helping our refugees who are here. And this was a bill that was, that I worked with SIT and VSEC to change the residency requirements for new requirements for new Americans so that they can more easily access classes to, to learn English or to learn how to drive and, you know, non-degree education that helps folks who have recently moved here, you know, have more skills to more easily just live here and, and work here. And we've also worked on another, on a series of bills related to improving literacy, changing the state school board composition and creating stronger protections against sexual assault on col-, on college campuses. So everything that I've described is really just a, excuse me, is a very small fraction of all the work that we're doing. And if you have any questions about a specific bill or another topic area, I'm happy to dive into it. We'll make sure to leave some of our reports here that also include our contact information and also describes other legislation that we've been working on. So again, thank you all for having me and it's, it's great to be here and start off town meeting in Newfane.
I kind of feel like I need to do a full disclosure. I'm not sure Nader even knows, but it was my brother who came up to testify. My brother is Ed Drew. Many of you do know that, but I'm not sure you did know that, Nader. And I tried desperately to get him to come up and have lunch with me before he testified to the Senate, but unfortunately the Senate was too long on the floor that day. So he ended up testifying remotely and didn't come up at all. So shame on the Senate for not letting my brother come up and have lunch with me in the House. I just want a quick say about education. First of all, all of you know, I'm probably most of you know, I am the majority leader in the House. I don't serve on a policy committee. I serve on two rules committees, but I spend an awful lot of time supporting our, our legislators to be able to do the jobs that they're doing. And as many of you also know, education is near and dear to my heart as well. And the work that Nader just talked about around CTEs is really important. It's going to be also important to our workforce, critically important to our workforce. I wanted to say that. I also wanted to acknowledge the conversation that's been going on recently around property tax rates and the future of public education in this state and in this country, frankly. Public education has been privatized across the country and there's a lot of push to do that as well here from what we are observing. And I want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to preserve a very powerful, high-quality, equitable, public education system that everyone has access to. That is a cornerstone of our democracy. I'll always fight for that. However, our property tax rates have increased and this year has been no small change. It was, it has been predicted that we could see property tax rate increases of up to 20%. We passed a bill very recently and very rapidly in both the House and the Senate. We threw it through all stages of passage to get it through to the governor and he's already signed it to make modifications to Act 127, which we passed in 2022, to make our education system more equitable. Many of you know that bill by the label of the waiting changes. It's a waiting bill. It changes our education funding system, which is a very complicated system. Hoping that's going to bring our property tax rates down. In fact, we're sure it is already. The predictions are that school districts have reduced their spending. And remember, our prop, our education funding system is a statewide system. So what we decide here impacts everybody in the whole state. So this is why we've made the change. I look forward to seeing how many districts either change their budgets. We did here in our West River District where I'm a member of the board. We changed our budget from what we first thought to once the cap, 5% cap went away, which I won't go into details with, we reduced our spending here. Others are doing it as well. Some are changing the date when they vote on their school budgets to make sure that we're bringing them down. But I don't want to minimize the fact that cost of education is high. And so we've already begun our next steps, um, looking at the transformation of public education here in Vermont, transformation of our education system. That includes both the delivery of our education system and the funding of our education system. So look forward to all the work that is going to take place. Part of that will be fold, have school construction aid folded into that because we have not had a school construction aid program since 2007 in this state. And it's long time overdue to reenact a school construction aid system here so that we can deal with our aging facilities. We also need to talk more about consolidation of our facilities as well. So all of that will take place throughout the next months and years, frankly. So thanks for all your support. Thank you for being, letting us be here today.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I, I think in the interest of time, we're going to ask constituents to find your, your contact information and ask your, ask their questions by email or telephone or catch you when you're at a library on a Saturday afternoon. I know you have-
This Saturday, I'm over here at Morphe Library.
This Saturday, you can catch Emily at Morphe Library. Yeah. So thank you so much. I know you have a lot more meetings to go to today. Which brings us to Article 8. Just to let you know, there is information up here that might be interesting to you, including safety glasses for April 8th. I think it's 8th, the 8th, when we'll see a partial eclipse of the sun unless you go up to Burlington with a million other people and you might see the whole thing. Article 8, am I on here? Yeah. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane raise by taxation the amount of $25,467 for the annual excavator lease payment for fiscal year 2025? Is there a motion? Tom Bedell moves it. Is there a second? Ken Estey seconds it. So it has been moved and seconded. Article 8 has been moved and seconded. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane raise by taxation the amount of $25,467 for the annual excavator lease payment for fiscal year 2025? Is there any discussion? Hearing none? You ready for the vote? I think. All right. So we're going to vote on Article 8. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane raise by taxation the amount of $25,467 for the annual excavator lease payment for fiscal year 2025? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it and the article passes. Article 9. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane raise by taxation the amount of $6,750 for the reappraisal reserve fund fiscal year 2025? Is there a motion? Lindsey Bertram has moved it. Is there a second? Joyce Van Pamelaan has seconded. So Article 9. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane raise by taxation the amount of $6,750 for the reappraisal reserve fund fiscal year 2025? Is there any discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Hall.
I just wanted to ask information. It's described as a reserve. When will the reappraisal take place and drawing on that?
I think, I, somebody want to answer it?
Uh, reappraisal should be 2027.
Microphone.
Sorry.
So this is Angela Sandborn, our select board chair.
Sorry, it's Angela Litchfield now.
Oh, Angela Litchfield. My bad.
That's okay. The reappraisal will be in 2027.
Any other questions or discussion? I believe there's more information in the town report under the listers report, if you're curious. Since there's no more discussion, we'll vote on Article 9. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane raise by taxation the amount of $6,750 for the reappraisal reserve fund fiscal year 2025? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Article 9 passes. I think saying reappraisal reserve fund is a tongue twister. Article 10. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate $10,000 for the Historical Society of Wyndham County to assist it in creating a free public museum at the 1825 jail building in Newfane's National Historic District? Is there a motion?
Beckley Gardett?
Beckley Gardett has moved it. Is there a second? Joyce Van Pamelaan's racking up the seconds. Article 10. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate $10,000 for the Historical Society of Wyndham County to assist it in creating a free public museum at the 1825 jail building in Newfane's National Historic District? Is there any discussion? Ken Estey?
So I think this is great and I like the juxtaposition of Article 10, $10,000. So that's a good thing. The question is, what is entailed here in a free public museum? What is that about? Are you excited to hear more about what is meant here by a free public museum and how this $10,000 looks to be worthy of investment?
Is there anyone here who wants to answer that question?
I've been working in the wings.
Okay. Please remember-
Yes.
To you, thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dick Merrick. I'm the president of the Historical Society. This is, I think, the first time since the 12 years that I was state rep before Emily that I've been up here. I will try to make it shorter than I ever did then. The, the Historical Society, just by way of background, we are the oldest, I think, society in the state apart from the Vermont Historical Society. This is our 98th year of serving the community. We operate with a volunteer board. We have a couple of part-time curators seasonally, but we have had a problem for about 25 years that relate to operating as a, an effective free museum. We've never charged for the use of our facilities. Our current museum was built in the mid-1930s and for the last 25 years, we have been struggling with how to create adequate exhibit space. It was wonderful in 1936, but it has become far outmoded in terms of space. So that was a problem we've had floating for the last 25 years as we struggled with ideas and tentative plans, none of which came to fruition. The county about a year and a half ago had a problem and their problem was the sheriff was moving to larger facilities in Brattleboro. And there was a significant danger that the current jail building was going to become and sheriff's office was going to become effectively a beacon, white elephant in the middle of the National Historic District. Sometimes we'd, and, and there are some real restrictions on use of that building because of the original deed from the Park family in 1825, which limited use of the county property and effectively said if you breach those conditions, the title will revert to the Park family descendants. One of those conditions is you can't use it for any commercial purpose. So I guess occasionally when you merge two problems, you come up with two wonderful solutions because we approached the county and said, how would you feel about us being able to create that as a museum? The county agreed with that. They are providing it for us rent-free. They are going to maintain the exterior and the grounds. We are however responsible for the interior and frankly, the place was in somewhat antiquated rabbit warren of old offices, asbestos flooring, lead paint, any number of other things. So we needed to undertake converting that into a modern museum and reopening an awful lot of the jail area, which had been closed in for various purposes that made sense at the time. Our budget for doing that is roughly $269,000. And we've enjoyed considerable support to date. We've been pursuing grants and fundraising. We received our initial seed money of $10,000 of our profunding through the select board, which was hugely helpful to us. Local entities, WW has been very helpful in getting us all our supplies at much lower costs. Cotton design helped us a lot with planning at the front end. Hatch Space in Brattleboro, which some of you may know, is going to do all our cabinetry for us at cost. So we're getting in-kind support. There's also a lot of sweat equity that's going into the building, but we're looking at a $269,000 budget. We're at about $90,000 right now of, of revenue that we've taken in. So it's a slow process. I was asked by one of our board members when we first considered this, and we did the railroad station very similarly about eight, nine years ago and have that functioning as a museum. How are we going to pay for this? And I said, well, we're going to do it the same way you eat an elephant, one little bite at a time. And so this is another bite. If, if you are good enough to vote to approve this, the town's contribution between the ARPA money in this will be about seven and a half percent of the overall budget. We ask towns every year for a small appropriation. In fact, I think I looked at the, the format today and we are, I think, one of the two entities at the very bottom of the ask list for operating help, $250. This is the first time in our 98 years we've come asking for a special appropriation. And I suspect, given that we expect this building to still be operating 100 years from now, it's the last time. So I guess my defense of the article is if you amortize the 98 years we haven't asked for anything in the next 100 years, in which I don't expect to ask for anything, it's 50 bucks a year.
Further discussion, Lindsey.
I'm just curious, what other, is every town in Wyndham County getting asked for a larger appropriation this year?
No, we are not. And that goes to the history of the museum. We started out as a county museum. Ironically, Newfane is one of only two towns, Stratton being the other one, that doesn't have a town historical society. But about 60% of our exhibit material is Newfane. So we are de facto the Newfane Society. We do ask the towns for appropriations toward operating expense every year. And I think we have about seven towns that actually vote for that. Some of them are kind of arcane. You have to circulate a petition and it's frankly not possible to have, you know, that done. But towns do support us, even though they have their own local historical society. But our sense of this project is we are an anchor in Newfane. We are serving the town. We're conserving a building here that otherwise would be vacant. And so this is really kind of a Newfane-centric thing. And our hope is it's going to really produce, I think especially with the jail, which everybody seems to just love to see, that we're going to actually be able to help the local businesses by having this thing in operation.
I have a question.
Yes, yeah. Please stand up.
Walter Hydorn. Dick, are there plans for the existing bill? Like will the Historical Society be moving into the new museum?
We are going to be gradually opening the new museum in the course of this year. We're probably going to do it gallery by gallery just because of the scope of it. Our hope is by this fall, we'll have the thing completely open. The current museum, we have, we have long needed space for archives and genealogy and research. And so we are going to convert that into a center for that purpose. It'll, it'll let us expand our holdings in those areas. It'll give us actual space for people to work as opposed to one table next to the curator, which is the only spot for people to do any research work. And we're also hoping to be able to have smaller conferences there. And I'm going to, we actually have the Vermont Historical Society coming up to do a film shoot this Friday and I'll be talking to the executive director of that society about possible linkages so we could do remote programs that they have up north. So it'll get use. Same question, same answer.
Any other questions or any other discussion? Or any other discussion? Thank you so much, Dick. Oh? Lindsay? Yeah?
Just for clarity, I was wondering if somebody could, you know, what the tax implication of the ten thousand dollars actually is?
Does anyone, the question is, what is the tax? I'm sorry. What is the tax implication of ten thousand dollars? I know I read it somewhere in the town report, but I don't remember where. Do you have a, any answer?
It's not going to really affect it much at all. You have to have twenty-five thousand dollars to raise it a penny. So there really isn't much of an implication either way.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. I will put the question to the voters. On Article ten. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate ten thousand dollars for the Historical Society of Wyndham County to assist it in creating a free public museum at the eighteen twenty-five jail building in New Fane's Historic District? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying nay. The ayes appear to have it? The ayes have it? And the article passes. Thank you. Article eleven. Whereas the U.S. Congress has the right to demand that the U.S. State Department certify that no U.S. arms and munitions are being used unlawfully to violate human rights, and whereas Israel has been using U.S. arms and munitions to indiscriminately bomb and shell Gaza, killing over twenty-one thousand civilians, including over ten thousand children as of January first, twenty twenty-four. Therefore, shall we, the voters of New Fane, call for an immediate ceasefire by all parties and Vermont representatives in Congress to endorse and promote paragraph five oh two B.C. in the Foreign Assistance Act to force the State Department to either certify or end arms sales to Israel? Is there a motion, a movement? Dan? You're, you're moving it? Okay. And a second?
I second.
Lynn Bedell seconds it? I'm going to read it again. Article eleven. Whereas the U.S. Congress has the right to demand that the U.S. State Department certify that no U.S. arms and munitions are being used unlawfully to violate human rights, and whereas Israel has been using U.S. arms and munitions to indiscriminately bomb and shell Gaza, killing over twenty-one thousand civilians, including over ten thousand children as of January first, twenty twenty-four. Therefore, shall we, the voters of New Fane, call for an immediate ceasefire by all parties and Vermont representatives in Congress to endorse and promote paragraph five zero two B.C. in the Foreign Assistance Act to force the State Department to either certify or end arms sales to Israel?
Objection.
There's an objection.
Second, the objection, I'd call it?
There's no need to second an objection. Uh, let me get my, this is a privileged motion, an objection. Let me unders, make sure I'm understanding this correctly. This is an objection to consider Article eleven? Is that it? All right. So this is a privileged motion. It does not need a second. There is no debate. It cannot be amended. It will only pass with a two-thirds majority. And as we just saw, it is allowed to interrupt the proceeding. All right?
Excuse me, point of order?
Yes?
Um, Kim Friedman, South New Fane. If I'm not mistaken, Marion and Emmett stood up at exactly the same time. And so I'm just wondering.
I'm sorry, I did not hear Emmett, and I know that, and, um, and I didn't hear, I didn't hear what you said, and I, um...
Um, I wanted to comment, and I introduce the segment behind it.
Well, I'm sorry, she, it's an interruptible.
No, I know, I just was wondering what your process was for determining how, when two people stand up at the same time, how one is...
I am a fallible human, and I only saw the person in front of me. So, and this is a privileged motion. This is something we have, I have studied since two thousand and seven. It is the first time I've had to use it.
Point of order, just a second.
A point of order, yes.
Um, even though I started to speak, the objection came in.
Right. And, and Emmett was not acknowledged. I, he, I didn't see him, and if he started to speak, it was without being, um, I'm, I'm using all my language, acknowledged by the, by the moderator. This person in front of me stood up and objected. It is a privileged order. We must deal with it. And I'm going to tell you how, okay?
I'm giving you...
All right. Okay. So, given that, let me have some more water. It's really just water. Given that we have this privileged motion that does not need a second, does, can't, we can't debate it, it can't be amended, uh, it is, um, we have to vote on it, and it has to be, it will only pass, it requires two-thirds of the assembly here now to pass.
You're talking about the objection?
Yes, yes. Just a minute, okay? Let me, let me just make sure I'm giving you all the right information. No. Oh, I know. It's in a different place. So I'm, I'm just, I just want to make sure I haven't left anything out, so please give me a second. Once in seventeen years, you know, you gotta look it up. So I've explained this process. It's now up to the body to decide what they want to do by voting, okay? You decide. As a moderator, I don't vote, all right? And my concern is entirely for running a fair and legal meeting according to Robert's Rules of Order, where everyone, everyone is equal, and that whatever you decide is legal and will stand up in court, okay? So what we need to do now is vote on the objection. And you have a question?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Should the grounds for the objection be stated?
Not in this particular privileged motion. If someone had interrupted this at a different place, so there's a long history about passing over articles, which I'm not going to get into, because the most recent court case said passing over is actually, so in Vermont, doesn't make any sense. There are so many different ways to do it. This, this particular one, there's no discussion, except me, I seem to be talking a lot. You could, we, we, you, this body now needs to vote on whether to sustain the objection or not. A yes vote sustains the objection. Let me just make sure I'm doing this right. If you vote aye, you are objecting to consider Article eleven, and if you vote nay, you are opposed to considering the objection. And so if it's, if you vote aye, and there's two-thirds, if two-thirds of you vote aye, we're going to not talk about Article eleven. And if two-thirds of you don't vote aye, if you vote nay, then we will go back to Article eleven. A question?
Question. You just said if two-thirds votes aye, we will not talk about Article eleven.
That's correct.
Do you mean that we will pass over Article eleven, or do you mean that we will not talk about it?
We will not talk about it. The court has said pass over is meaningless in Vermont.
Okay, we will skip.
We will not discuss Article eleven at this meeting, okay?
So that's clear.
We will not vote, discuss, or vote on Article eleven.
If two-thirds...
If, but that, that's a high bar. Two-thirds have to vote aye to sustain the objection. Okay? Yeah, another question?
I'm sorry, if I want, if I want this to stay on the table, if I want to talk about it, I vote no?
That's correct.
Thank you.
If being Article eleven.
If I want to talk about Article eleven, I'm about to vote no.
We are now not voting on Article eleven. We are voting on the objection to talking about Article eleven. I want, I want to make sure everybody understands this. The question I'm going to ask you is, shall the body uphold, no, 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 no. I'm going to go right to, right to Roberts here on this page. I just really want to make sure this is right. The consider, the consideration of a question of Article eleven is objected to. So shall the question be considered? No, so, so this is, I, I maybe, just a minute. Annie? So, here's, here's answers to, to some of the issues. A member rises, even if another has been assigned the floor, and without waiting to be recognized, addresses the chair and says, I object to the consideration of the question. We've had that. We've gotten that far. Okay? The considerate, my, my script says, the consideration of the question has been objected to, shall the question be considered? So here, I misinformed you, but this is correct. Those in favor of considering the question, please rise. Those opposed to considering the question, then, um, rise. And if there are two-thirds opposed, the question will not be considered. Okay? So...
Are you...
No, the question being the objection. Okay, we are only voting on the objection. I wish there was something stronger in here. Question?
Marshall Lipton, South New Fane. I've got so many long heated debates on this topic, and these long conversations, not want to end up in other long conversations.
Point of order, Sam. Point of order.
Just a minute. I didn't hear a thing you said, okay? So...
I said, I've been involved in many long heated debates on this topic, and I can be voted for a ceasefire, but not necessarily want to engage in very long heated debates likely.
Point of order.
Excuse me. That's okay. Yes.
Just to give you context to the...
Yes.
As, as you have been trying to explain, right, there's no debate on this motion. This is a motion to not discuss this article.
Right. Thank you.
The moderator is under Robert's orders to immediately call the vote. So I would ask, please...
Thank you.
Immediately call the vote.
All vote.
If you are in favor of blocking discussion on this motion, then vote yes.
Yes, yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Thank you. I wanted to make sure, however, that, and that was out of order. And I want to make sure that everybody understands what they're voting on. And it's easy to get confused, okay? So I'm just going to get it clear and give it to you. We've had an objection to discussing Article eleven. Shall the question be considered? Shall Article seven, eleven be considered? If you are in favor, please indicate by standing up.
We, we, we're not clear. You're not clear. Say it again. We have an objection. We have to take it. We have to vote on the objection. Point of order.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I, I thought so, but then this has gotten, I, I, I've been hearing so much, I'm, I've gotten confused, okay?
Take a break.
Right.
I... Stand.
Okay. All right. So we can't do it by standing.
Stand.
I had this so clear before, before this.
Point of order.
I, I, I have to, I have to put this to a vote.
Yeah. Well, to put it to a vote, that's putting the objection to the vote. So you're saying by considering Article eleven, that's putting the objection to the vote. It's not...
It's not order of consideration.
Do you approve the objection or you don't?
Right.
That's the question.
Robert's rule of order.
Deb, you have a judge standing up.
I was waiting to suggest that the phrasing could be, shall the objection be sustained?
You're voting on, we're, we're voting, we're voting, Mr. Hall, I'm going to just put this to the vote, okay? If you vote, I'm going to ask you, shall the objection be sustained? And if you vote yes, you want it sustained. If you vote no, you don't. We can't do it by standing since some people are not seated. We could do it by hands, and if there are seven people who ask for a paper ballot, we could do it by a paper ballot. By a show of hands, shall the, shall the objection be sustained? Raise your hand. And I need Board of Civil Authority. Now you want to make sure you all have the same number and give it to me, please? I'd like to take this moment to thank Bobby Litchfield for fixing the clock. Thank you. Otherwise, we were going to be here at twenty to ten for the entire morning. So, just write it down. I have ways I'm supposed to write it. Just a minute. We, we need to have those who are against sustaining the objection to vote. Just a minute, we, we need to have those who are against sustaining the objection to vote. I need, I need the num, uh, so I didn't get this number.
Sorry, I thought I was reporting on something else.
No, I, I just need the number of votes, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, that's yours. It's a really nice pen, thank you. I think you put your hands down. And I know it looks obvious, but I need to report it exactly. You like this one? Yeah, I know, this is my thing, so. Okay. So. There, there were seventy-one votes cast. There were twenty-one to sustain the objection and fifty to overrule the objection. And, uh, that meets the two-thirds. Oh, math is not my strong point, but, but. It meets the two-thirds. So the objection fails and we go back to Article 11. And before we start debate, I do want to say that it is possible at this point to decide as a group if you want to limit debate because there are still a lot of other things afterwards. For instance, you could say, uh, only one person can, can, you can only speak one once instead of twice. We could say, we can debate this until eleven o'clock. We have lots of ways of doing it, or we can just see what happens. But I wanted to let people know that there is that possibility. Yes, sir?
Ed Collins, um, I thought we were supposed to lead politics.
We're not discussing that now, we are discussing.
This is politics.
Excuse me, sir, that's out of order. We are discussing right now how long to go on, um, to, how long to debate Article 11. You'll have a chance once we decide that. You can, okay? We are debating, not debating, I am offering you the opportunity to change Roberts' rules so that we, uh, debate this, we could have, we, right now, under Roberts' rules, everyone can speak as much as twice. Please sit down. But we could say, everybody can speak once. We could say, we will speak about this for thirty minutes, for fifteen minutes, till we are finished. It's up to you. I just wanted to offer that as a possibility, and I would entertain a motion. Yeah? And is there, so it's been moved that everybody gets a chance to speak once. Is there a second? And you are? Walter French. So there is a motion on the floor to limit debate to each person one time. It's time to vote. Well, is there discussion? Is there discussion? About, about the motion, the motion? There's discussion about the motion?
Yes. Could we put a time around to get three minutes to speak?
You, you can also do that. Would you like to amend the motion? That everybody gets to speak once for three minutes? Well, this is, you're making the motion, you can say what you need to say. Two minutes? So we, um, have to, now we have to vote on that?
Could we second that?
Oh, yes, you can second that, thank you. Okay. So we now have an amendment to the motion. And have to deal with the amendment first, which is to limit speech to two minutes. Is there, and it's, it's been made and seconded. So is there discussion about that? Dan? We are, we, we've already got two amendments, we can't do that. No, we have an amendment to speak for only one time and now for two minutes. So we can't. Okay, so said. Did you hear him?
No.
Okay. Right here, right here.
I would posit that if we are only allowed to speak once, that, um, we give folks all three minutes as opposed to two.
That's, um, this is discussion now. The, yes, sir? Ten minutes. And, uh, twice. Okay? Is there any other discussion? So we have an amendment to an amendment. The first thing that you're being asked to discuss, to decide is whether there'll be a two-minute, um, limit. Well, first we have to decide on the amendment and then we'll get to the one time, okay? Lots of permutations. You are in charge of this meeting, all right? So, right now, you're being asked to vote on if you want a two-minute limit or not. All right? All those in favor of a two-minute limit, please indicate so by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. We have a two-minute limit. Now, we're going to vote on the amendment, the first amendment, to speak only one time. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? I'm going to ask you to vote. Those in favor, oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to speak?
So it's only two minutes we can speak?
Right now, we haven't finished. Right now. And only one time. Well, there's a minute, just a minute, we haven't decided about one time yet. That's what we're voting on now.
But it's only two minutes, though.
Right now, it's only two minutes. Right now. Right now, okay? But right now, we're actually going to vote on how many times? If you are willing, if, if you are in favor of limiting people to speak one time, please indicate so by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. The amendment passes. So right now, you're being asked to vote in favor of a one, one-time, two-minute speech per person. We haven't, but we haven't voted on it yet. That's what you're being asked. We have amended, we, we are in the process of amending how we're operating. So, so now, we have a new amendment on the floor. It is, all those in favor of limiting debate to one time and two minutes, please indicate so by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You have just changed Roberts' rules of order to suit your needs or the needs of the majority of the people here, and I congratulate you on that. All right? So. Picture of my grandson. Two minutes. We're going to take up, we are going to take up Article 11 now, where everybody gets to speak one time. And I believe, I believe, Dan, that you made the motion? Just a, who made the motion? I think you made the motion. So you are entitled to speak first. But you don't have to, you can speak later. It's up to you. Sir, you want to speak first?
I'm Adam Adobi. First, I'll be honest, as a mark for thirty thousand Palestinian civilians who have killed. Now I would say, claim one of this resolution to Newfane. Last year, the year without active conflict, the U.S. spent three-point-eight billion in millions spent into military funding to Israel, which comes out to an average of twenty-five dollars and fifty cents per U.S. taxpayer. When Newfane has approximately sixteen hundred U.S. taxpayers, that means you're spending about forty thousand dollars per year. This money could instead be used to fund Article twelve through fourteen, which totals forty-one thousand. Second, Newfane has been proven to be extremely vulnerable to climate change. From floods damaging homes and infrastructure, homes and infrastructure, to having a largely resource-defended economy, we can't afford to exacerbate the crisis. In January, The Guardian reported that the emissions generated from the first two months of the war in Gaza were greater than the annual carbon footprint of more than twenty of the world's most climate-vulnerable nations. Next, I'd like to talk about presidents. In nineteen seventy-four, Setford was the first municipality to call for the impeachment of Nissen. In nineteen eighty-two, one-hundred-and-sixty towns in Vermont passed regulations for nuclear freedom. In two thousand and five, fifty-four Vermont towns had regulations calling for the return of U.S. troops from Iraq, thirty-four of which passed. In two thousand and seven, forty Vermont towns passed regulations calling for impeachment of W.W.A. Newfane voted in these matters without suffering fallout for discussing controversial issues. There are over sixty-seven American cities that have passed these prior regulations, including Bradford and Setford, Vermont. My hope today is that Newfane will be the sixty-eighth. Thank you.
Uh, yes.
May I just request that, may I just request that you go to the microphone if you're going to speak?
Please.
Oh, yes, I, I always request that. I've been ignored most, almost seventeen years. Kind of like my kids, you know? So, and that was under two minutes. So the next person to speak is going to come up to this microphone. Stop, no, stop. Okay. And who's that going to be? Ken Esty, are you coming up? I, no, it's. I've, I've got this person. Those who want to speak can line up behind Ken. But I will try to get different points of view as well. Okay?
Okay? I just wanted to also thank Deb, uh, thank our moderator for walking us through. It's, it's not easy to do what you're doing, and you are taking time and, and taking a breath and stepping back from the mic and thinking, and that was really great. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We are well-served. I'd like to speak to the language in Article 11. One thing that really sticks out for me is, um, you know, shall we, um, the voters of Newfane call for immediate ceasefire? And then it says, "by all parties." All parties. And I think that speaks to the even-handedness of this article and the fairness of this article and the justice of this article. You know, an immediate ceasefire by all parties. All parties. Not just one party or the other party, but all parties. So I think that's really, um, really important to note. So I really appreciate that about Article 11. And, um, also, the other thing that occurs to me about this is that, you know, we're, we're a community here, Newfane, and we don't always agree with each other, but we are a community and we do meet with each other. We're all here in the same room at the same meeting, looking out for each other, looking out for the town. And, um, I also think of the people in Gaza and Israel, and they, they care about the same things. They care about their towns. They care about their people. They care about their children and their grandparents and the cousins and uncles and aunts. They care about their communities too. And so we, we share that with the people of Gaza and with the people of Israel. We, we share those same concerns. We're just like them. And so that's why, for me, that immediate ceasefire by all parties really sticks out because we're talking about community and talking about. Two minutes, thank you, we're talking about community, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And, uh, Kevin, can I, um, get you, if I, if you, if the two minutes goes off, could you give the speaker? Yeah, I'm talking to you. I need someone who can see me when I go like this. Oh, you have your glasses on? No. Oh. I, I've got a timer. I'm just going to go like this, they can't see me, so you're just going to, you know, timeout and, and let, let them, let them finish their, their sentence and then they'll move on. All right. Bruce Russo.
Hello, I'm Bruce Russo from Williamsville. I agree with the sentiments of this article. What I disagree with is what's left out. I understand we can't amend it. I just learned that, it's privileged, but I wanted to amend it.
No, this is not privileged.
Oh, okay.
The, the, only the objection was privileged. You can't amend it.
So I would like to amend this article to include the following language that I presented with you to add, because I do agree with the sentiments. I do agree ceasefire need to happen. It, it never should have, none of this should have happened. It's, it's caused us all great despair. To add, whereas Hamas continues to brutally repress the Palestinian people in Gaza, including using the civilian population as a shield for their military operations, brutally attacked and massacred Israeli citizens on October seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, and unlawfully captured, brutalized, and continues to hold in captivity and torture Israeli hostages, we, the voters of Newfane, Vermont, call for Hamas to immediately and unconditionally release all the hostages. We, the voters of Newfane, call for both sides in this conflict to acknowledge the pain and trauma they have inflicted on the other. We, the voters of Newfane, call on both sides, for the sake of all of our children, to accept the right for both sides to exist with freedom from repression, with freedom from the threat of annihilation from the other, and with self-determination in peace.
So there has been, there has been a, an, a motion for an amendment? Is there a second? Uh, okay, who wants to go on? And, and he did that in under two minutes. Who wants to go on this? I'm sorry, tell me your ma, your name, sir?
CB is my name.
CB?
CB? Hall, okay. So we need names, Carol needs names. She's taking the minutes of this. The people who are going to watch this later, God bless them, are going to need to know who spoke. All right? So that's why we need to know who is seconding the motion. So I am going to, so now what happens is we have to discuss the motion of the amendment. And I'm going to read to you what is proposed to add to Article 11. Yes?
Who was, who seconded Bruce's motion?
CB Hall.
No, I'm not, no. My request is...
No, I'm sorry, not...
Ed Collins.
This man.
Ed Collins.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Ed Collins, I'm so sorry.
South Newfane.
Could I raise a point of order now?
You can make a point of order.
I thought you had said that the question was the motion, the original article, a lot of...
No, no, I'm sorry, I was unclear. The objection is a privileged motion. And we have, we have taken care of the objection. We're now down to ordinary business. Article 11 is on the floor, and we have an amendment that has been proposed and seconded. It is up to me now to reread it, and then we can discuss the amendment. And we will apply the same rules to the amendment that we have applied to all of Article 11. Okay? Talk once to the amendment, and once, and only for no more than two minutes, okay? It does mean that whatever happens with the amendment, if you have not spoken to Article 11 as printed, you still have a turn to... And if you spoke, if you speak to the amendment, you can, and the amendment passes, you can still talk to the original article if you have not already spoken. So I'm hoping somebody is keeping track of who speaks, because it isn't me. Okay, the amendment is to add to Article 11, whereas Hamas continues to brutally repress the Palestinian people in Gaza, including using the civilian population as a shield for their military operations, brutally attacked and massacred Israeli citizens on October 7, 2023, and unlawfully captured, brutalized, and continues to hold in captivity and torture Israeli hostages, we, the voters of Newfane, Vermont, call for Hamas to immediately and unconditionally release all the hostages. We, the voters of Newfane, call for both sides in this conflict to acknowledge the pain and trauma they have inflicted on the other. We, the voters of Newfane, call on both sides, for the sake of all our children, to accept the right for both sides to exist with freedom from repression, with freedom from the threat of annihilation from the other, and with self-determination in peace. So, this is what we are now discussing, is this amendment. And I wish that we had PowerPoint, so I could just put it up on a screen and you could all see it. I am very grateful for Bruce for at least providing me with a copy. Do you want to speak to the amendment? Mic is yours.
Dan DeWalt, South Newfane. And while I appreciate Bruce's amendment, the original, Article 11 was written purposely not to debate the history of Israel and the history of Palestine. And the only, the first, I don't know if it's a paragraph, but the first part of that, which just singles out Hamas, I agree with all those things about Hamas. However, to not also cite the atrocities and the deaths, which are in both number and of incidents and numbers of actual deaths, are much greater than the deaths of Israelis by Palestinians, I feel like it's one-sided. I would like to offer an amendment to Bruce's amendment, which eliminates the first part and starts with a part where it says, "we condemn both sides," etc. So, I don't have that in front of me, so I can't articulate it exactly. But I think it's important to understand that atrocities, death, illegal deaths, are part and parcel of both sides of this, and to only, and I am not for a second condoning what Hamas did, but to only criticize and condemn Hamas for that action is to belittle the Palestinian people and belittle their, and to ignore the reality of what they have been living under, which is a brutal occupation, which has killed hundreds of thousands of them over the years.
So let me be clear, where you want to edit this? Well, I just need, if you just tell me. Starting, we, the voters, okay. So, there is a proposal to amend the amendment, so that the entire amendment now reads, "We, the voters of Newfane, call for both sides in this conflict to acknowledge the pain and trauma they have inflicted on the other. We, the voters of Newfane, call on both sides, for the sake of all our children, to accept the right for both sides to exist with freedom from repression, with freedom from the threat of annihilation from the other, and with self-determination in peace." So now I'm going to ask you to accept... Well, I thank you. Are you seconding it? Or just telling me what I'm supposed to be doing? Thank you, thank you. It's been, it's been moved and seconded, I'm going to read it again, and then we will have discussion. All right? The proposed amendment is to shorten the one that Bruce proposed to read simply, "We, the voters of Newfane, call for both sides in this conflict to acknowledge the pain and trauma they have inflicted on the other. We, the voters of Newfane, call on both sides, for the sake of our children, to accept the right for both sides to exist with freedom from repression, with freedom from the threat of annihilation from the other, and with self-determination in peace." Now, it is open to discussion, one time, two minutes. Erica.
Thank you. Erica Walsh, Newfane. The purpose of town meeting is to decide the town's budget, and to set the tax rate, and to understand what's going on in the town, read the annual report. It's fine that in Setford in 1970, whatever, you know, they voted to impeach Richard Nixon. I think it had zero impact on Richard Nixon or the country, just like nuclear disarmament, impeaching Bush. And I think that showing the amendment, and then the amendment to the amendment, shows that this is a political divisive issue, it has nothing to do with the town's business. And it, there's a lot of injustices in the world, there's bad things happening all over the world that people have diverse opinions about. That has nothing to do with Newfane's operating budget and Newfane's tax rate. Therefore, I, I think that we should, I am voting no against the amendment to the amendment to the amendment to Article 11, because it has no business with Newfane's just town business.
Hear, hear.
I'm giving precedent to people who are lined up to use the microphone.
Chris White. Thank you, Erica, you said everything I wanted to say.
I didn't even get to start the timer. So, and then, and then Geraldine.
Tom Bedell. Mankind is my business, is it not? But my question is, the amendment to the motion, where's it going? Is it just getting tacked on at the end?
It says added, yeah.
Added, okay.
Right. So, to clarify, this has been proposed to be, go at the end of Article 11 is written, and then we're now talking about adding the "we, the voters" to the end. Okay?
Hello, Gerald Julian Sissé, South Newfane. And I am in support of both the original amendment, the original article, and then Bruce's amendment, because overall, we want the killing to stop. We don't want this to continue on. None of us here are going to solve decades and hundreds of years of political disagreement. But we can support, on a humanitarian basis, people all around the world. We do it all the time. So I am in support of this, I would hope that you could also vote to support that we stop the killing, we stop funding the killing. That's all, thank you.
So Geraldine, I just need a clarification. We're now discussing the amendment to, to Bruce's original amendment? And is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I am in support of Bruce's amendment to the original amendment.
Well, no, we're now, it's now shortened, the shortened version of Bruce's amendment is what we're discussing.
Okay.
It's, it's difficult, because it's a long amendment, but Bruce, Bruce proposed the amendment that reads in its entirety, "Whereas Hamas continues to brutally repress," to "with self-determination in peace." And it has been amended by Dan to start at, "We, the voters of Newfane, call for both sides in this conflict to acknowledge." That's what we're actually voting on now, and I will read it in full on request indefinitely before you vote on it.
Thank you. Well, you've heard what I had to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to be clear. So we are discussing the amendment to the amendment right now.
Can we call the question on the amendment to the amendment?
If you're recognized by the chair, and right now there are some other people who want to speak.
Phil Schaefer from Newfane, I'd like to call the question.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's not you, that's, that's somebody else.
And if you want to move this along, I hope the next guy coming up to the microphone will call the question, and backing up the amendment, and then call the question, and just getting the vote done.
You could do it.
I just did.
You did.
Called the question.
You just called the question.
But that's only on the amended...
Well, that's, we have to vote on everything, okay. So the question has been called, which means we're now going to vote on the amended amendment, and I'm going to read it to you. The proposal is to add to Article 11 as printed in your warning, to add, oh, just a minute. I don't want the timer to go off while I'm speaking. All right. "We, the voters of Newfane, call for both sides in this conflict to acknowledge the pain and trauma they have inflicted on the other. We, the voters of Newfane, call on both sides, for the sake of all our children, to accept the right for both sides to exist with freedom from repression, with freedom from the threat of annihilation from the other, and with self-determination in peace." All those in favor of adding this language to Article 11, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. And the amendment to the amendment passes. Which I think means we now add, we add this language to Article 11. Point of order, yeah.
Did we not just vote on Dan's proposal to amend Bruce's amendment?
Yes.
So we did not add anything, we subtracted from Bruce's amendment.
That's correct.
So now we hold our demand that reduce the language to Article 11.
That is correct. Thank you for being here. I'm going to read Article 11 as amended. All right? Article 11, "Whereas the US Congress has the right to demand that the US State Department certify that no US arms and munitions are being used unlawfully to violate human rights, and whereas Israel has been using US arms and munitions to indiscriminately bomb and shell Gaza, killing over 21,000 civilians, including over 10,000 children as of January 1, 2024, therefore, shall we, the voters of Newfane, call for an immediate ceasefire by all parties and Vermont representatives in Congress to endorse and promote Paragraph 502 B.C. in the Foreign Assistance Act to force the State Department to either certify or end arms sales to Israel. We, the voters of Newfane, call for both sides in this conflict to acknowledge the pain and trauma they have inflicted on the other. We, the voters of Newfane, call on both sides, for the sake of our children, to accept the right for both sides to exist with freedom from repression, with freedom from the threat of annihilation from the other, and with self-determination in peace." I think I'm correct in saying that is what we're discussing now. And it's open for discussion, and everybody gets one chance for two minutes at the microphone.
Just point of order.
Yeah.
We are voting on whether to change the language of Article 11.
Oh, you know, we have to, we have to vote on that. Right.
To the language you have...
You're right, you're right, we're not ready to discuss it.
We are not voting on the article yet.
Right, thank you. Are you running for moderator? We do have to vote on whether we're accepting the article as I just read it. All right? And articles can still, you can still amend them. But we need to decide if you're, if this is the article you want to vote on. We're not voting on it, we're voting on if this is the article you want to discuss, okay? Article 11, "Whereas the US Congress has the right to demand that the US State Department certify that no US arms and munitions are being used unlawfully to violate human rights, and whereas Israel has been using US arms and munitions to indiscriminately bomb and shell Gaza, killing over 21,000 civilians, including over 10,000 children as of January 1, 2024, therefore, shall we, the voters of Newfane, call for an immediate ceasefire by all parties and Vermont representatives in Congress to endorse and promote Paragraph 502 B.C. in the Foreign Assistance Act to force the State Department to either certify or end arms sales to Israel. We, the voters of Newfane, call for both sides in this conflict to acknowledge the pain and trauma they have inflicted on the other. We, the voters of Newfane, call on both sides, for the sake of all our children, to accept the right for both sides to exist with freedom from repression, with freedom from the threat of annihilation from the other, and with self-determination in peace." So, that is, we vote, we vote to accept this amendment, correct? The language of this amendment, just the language of it. Are you in favor of this language? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those who are opposed, say no.
No.
All right, the ayes have it, the ayes appear to have it. This is now our Article 11. Our Article 11 can still be amended, or discussed, and discussed. I mean, it's not either or. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to Article 11 as amended? Dan, please come up to the mic.
Thank you. I would just like to reiterate to folks, this is not an amendment criticizing Israel's right to exist. This is not an amendment criticizing Israel's right to self-defense. This is simply a men, excuse me, this is simply an amendment acknowledging that... Sorry. I'm lost in amendment land. This is an article that acknowledges that deaths of civilians, starvation of civilians, attacks on civilians is not a legitimate method of achieving an aim. We have United States law, the Leahy Law, this law that's referenced in the article, that says that our weapons cannot be used in an unlawful fashion. In the International Judicial Court, with an American judge, by votes of 13 to 2 and 14 to 1 on 14 different counts, those judges found that there is a legitimate case to be made, in this case by South Africa, accusing Israel of genocide in this case, and Palestine. So, we're not using these words lightly, we're not thinking of this as jumping ugly on Israel. This is simply about human rights and the use of the military against the civilian population. I would, I would urge us to, and this is also about us simply following our own law. Not only did the American judge rule that genocide is quite likely here, Patrick Leahy has said that the Leahy Law has been violated. These are, these are, it's a question of, do we want to live by the laws that we have enacted? Or do we want to ignore those laws that we have acted? Do we want to live in a high-minded fashion, where we believe that we act for the good of the world, and that we care about the lives of civilians? Or do we want to ignore that? And just let the harsh realities of military action wiping out the civilian population of anywhere be okay with us? Because we are complicit. Our own Senator Bernie Sanders said that we are... Our own Senator Bernie Sanders said that we are complicit in this. And my time is up.
Thank you. All right. Hanana.
Hi, I'm Henriette Mantel from NuFain, Vermont. I think we can keep making amendments on amendments on amendments on amendments. But I'm reminded of, and I think it's all good and it's a democracy and we should all have our opinion and do what we want. However, I'm reminded of going to a meeting in Heartland, Vermont once when Soljenitsyn was there. And he kept standing up and talking about the values of democracy, the Russian dissident Soljenitsyn, which I'm sure you've read all his books. And he kept standing up, talking about democracy and getting all these things going. And pretty soon, the moderator just slammed the gavel and said, "Mr. Soljenitsyn, with all true respect, we're glad you're here. It's all good. But if you don't have something to say about the amount of salt on your road, then you've got to slow down." You know? And I just feel like my friends are leaving this meeting because of all this. And it's important, yes. But come on, you guys. Can we just please move this meeting on? Thank you. I call whatever question I'm calling.
The question has been called. Is there a second? Yeah, there are few. Did you get, did you have somebody's second? Did you have somebody's name for the second? Okay. And so we have to actually vote on, we need a two-thirds majority to agree that the question has been called. Okay? So all those in favor, and I see there's somebody who wanted to speak, who has, but the question has been called. If there's no objection, we could let one more person speak? Hearing there's an objection, we have to go with a vote. And maybe, maybe the vote will be that you want to keep talking. So all those in favor of ending debate, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
That is a two-thirds majority. Ending debate passes. So I'm going to read it one more time. And you're going to vote on it. Okay? A yes vote is in favor of the amended Article 11. A no vote is against it. Article 11. Whereas the U.S. Congress has the right to demand that the U.S. State Department certify that no U.S. arms and munitions are being used unlawfully to violate human rights, and whereas Israel has been using U.S. arms and munitions to indiscriminately bomb and shell Gaza, killing over 21,000 civilians, including over 10,000 children as of January 1st, 2024, therefore, shall we, the voters of NuFain, call for an immediate ceasefire by all parties and Vermont representatives in Congress to endorse and promote Paragraph 502 B.C. in the Foreign Assistance Act to force the State Department to either certify or end arms sales to Israel. We, the voters of NuFain, call for both sides in this conflict to acknowledge the pain and trauma they have inflicted on the other. We, the voters of NuFain, call on both sides, for the sake of all our children, to accept the right for both sides to exist with freedom from repression, with freedom from the threat of annihilation from the other, and with self-determination in peace. All those in favor of Article 11 as amended, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Article 11 as amended passes. We will now take a seven-minute recess and come back at 24 minutes after 11. Moving right along. Article 12. Shall the voters of the town of NuFain appropriate the sum of $250 to the AIDS Project of Southern Vermont? Do I hear a motion? Lynn.
I'd like to make a motion that we combine Articles 12 through 40 in the amount of $41,640.
Now, second.
I think you have to wait until it is, it's on the floor. Article 12, as read, as read. Article 12, shall the voters of the town of NuFain appropriate the sum of $250 to the AIDS Project of Southern Vermont, needs to be moved and seconded.
So moved.
So moved and seconded. Hold on. Where is our clerk?
She's not even sure.
Oh. Okay. Okay, Carol, I'm sorry, I didn't see that you weren't there. Article 12 has been moved by,
Beth Spicer. Meg.
Meg. Right, right. And seconded by Joyce Van Pamela. So shall the voters of the town of NuFain appropriate the sum of $250 to the AIDS Project of Southern Vermont? And Lynn Vidal, please come up to the microphone so we can hear you.
I make a motion that we combine Articles 12 through 40 in the amount of $41,540 and vote as one article.
Second.
Can I have that number again, please? Just a second. Hold on, hold on.
$41,640.
So there has been a motion to amend Article 12.
Point of order.
Yeah?
You have a motion already. This is number four. It's page 12.
That was an amendment.
No, you asked for a motion for Article 12. These two people moved the second to Article 12. You have a motion for more.
Yeah, now we're taking a mess.
And this is?
This is not opportunism, then.
Yeah?
How would we make it so we can vote on all Articles 12 through 40 in one shot?
You can withdraw your motion.
Okay.
I need Meg to withdraw hers.
I'll withdraw.
Okay. Does that satisfy us? And now I let,
You don't have to.
No, I'm, Bucky's helping me out here. But don't I have to have a motion on the floor? Or do I accept her motion to?
Yeah, because you asked for a motion to alter.
I think that that could be, I thought I was doing it right.
Well, I make a motion.
Just, okay, so make the motion. Make the motion again. Please, I'm sorry. And I've got the right number. Third kindness, a good charm.
I make, I make a motion that we combine Articles 12 through 20 in the,
Forty.
Forty, sorry. In the amount of $41,640. And vote, forty-one, $41,640. And vote on it as one article.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So now we've satisfied the rules here. It's been, I need to put it in motion by restating it. We're now voting on combining Articles 12 through 40, special appropriations for a total of $41,640 as one article. Is there discussion? Yes.
Eric Walsh, NuFain. Just as I believe that international affairs are not the business of the town.
I'm sorry.
Is that better? Yes. Just as I believe international affairs are not the business of the town, I also believe that philanthropy is not the business of the town and taxpayers' money. Although it is a very small amount and we all agreed without discussion to pass a $1.7 million budget that is for operating the town. And this money, which is $41,640, is almost half of the new road crew position, which is something that we genuinely need in the town. People have their own ideas of where they want to spend their philanthropic dollars and are free and able to do so. And I don't believe that taxpayers' money should be used to fund charities. Therefore, I will be voting against the entire budget. Although there are many worthy causes here and many that I support with my own, my own money that I choose to spend, I don't think that our tax, our tax dollars should be used to pay for nonprofit organizations. Our tax dollars should be used to fund the town's operations.
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody that we are back to, everybody can speak twice for up to three minutes each time. But you can't speak the second time until everybody who wants to speak the first time has done so. Just thought everybody should know that. Does anybody have a different opinion and want to come up to the mic and do so? Yeah?
Are we not discussing whether to combine names or keep each separate?
Oh. It's time, it's time to retire. Yeah.
I would also urge all of you to consider these individually, just as a personal view. Yes, it's nice to be quick. We've already been here for two and a half hours. But please, this is our money that's going to all of these things. And it's worth talking about. And there's other reasons why. One of them is, these are requests. They have all given us lots of information. There are proven how many people from NuFain are benefiting from these. And they also give their full operation costs in our town reports. And we are providing a very small amount of that to them. In some cases, a fraction. But it's worth all of our time to look at everyone individually. Thank you.
Yeah, I think in the, is this on? In the interest of saving time, I think we should, I'm in favor of the amendment. But if there are individual bequests people want to discuss, why don't we do that and then pass them all? Or not pass them all?
It doesn't work that way. Robert's Rules doesn't allow us to do that. Ken.
Ken Estey, NuFain. I would strenuously object to the idea this is philanthropic. These are services that we would otherwise be paying our taxes for. So, you know, these are investments in our town and in our community.
Thank you, Ken. Right now, we are discussing whether to combine them or not. And I'll entertain any other comments about how we want to proceed. Oh.
Yes. I would like to second what Katie said. As much as, you know, it'll take us half an hour to go through these requests. But this is a pretty short town meeting. We don't want to lose our town meeting entirely. And some people, you know, might have very strong, when we lump them all together, then people lose the chance to object. They lose a chance to support something. You know, they have to, it all has to be one thing. We used to do that. And it was people asking that they be separated again so we could consider them. And also, it gives the people asking the money a chance to express themselves and what they do in the town. And we learn a little bit more about each other. We learn more about our community. So I would like us to take the extra time to consider them individually.
Excuse me? Do you want to be acknowledged to call a question?
Lori Minor, NuFain.
You're calling a question?
Calling a question.
Did you second it?
Yes.
All right. So the question has been called to end debate. And I need a two-thirds vote to do so. So we won't talk about combining it anymore. You'll just decide. All those in favor of combining Articles 12 through 40 into one article? Let me finish.
All in favor of terminating discussion.
Thank you. All of those in favor of terminating discussion about lumping together Articles 20 through 40, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. We are going to go through each article individually. We did? Oh, no, we didn't. Oh, boy. Oh, boy. Yeah. Thank you. We're not going to discuss whether or not we're going to do it. We're going to vote on it. Okay? All those in favor of combining Articles 12 through 40 to the amount of $41,640, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no.
No.
I think the noes have it. It's close. So we're not, they just voted not to combine them, correct? Correct?
Yes.
All right. So taking up Article 12. Shall the voters of the town of NuFain appropriate the sum of $250 to the AIDS Project of Southern Vermont? And there are, this year, because, due to a voter request, the Select Board chose to put all the, all the information, all the requests right into, Request for Social Service Funding, into your town report, starting on page 102. So you can see what, if you haven't, if you haven't read this before you came today, you could read it now. I know most of you did your homework. Is, moved? Thank you. And Meg is seconding it. And I will read it again. Shall the voters of the town of NuFain appropriate the sum of $250 to the AIDS Project of Southern Vermont? Is there any discussion? Hearing none? You ready for the vote? Shall the voters of the town of NuFain appropriate the sum of $250 to the AIDS Project of Southern Vermont? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. And Article 12 passes. Article 13. Shall the voters of the town of NuFain appropriate the sum of $4,000 to Grace Cottage Hospital? Is there a motion? Bucky Pelsu, and second? Lori Minor. Article 13. Shall the voters of the town of NuFain appropriate the sum of $4,000 to Grace Cottage Hospital? You moved it. Do you want to speak?
Briefly. I think most of you know I have a familiar history in Grace Cottage.
Thank you.
I think most of you know that I have a familiar history with Grace Cottage Hospital. And the number of years that I've spoken in favor of supporting the town's requests, the requests to the town for Grace Cottage Hospital. And so I'm just urging you to do that again. To, to help the best we can to keep Grace Cottage viable and sustainable. Thank you.
Any other comments? I'd like to point out, there's information up here about the plans to expand the clinic, if anyone is interested. So if there's no other conversation, comment, we'll take it to a vote. Article, Article 13. Shall the voters of the town of NuFain appropriate the sum of $4,000 to Grace Cottage Hospital? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. And Article 13 passes. Article 14, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,300 to Senior Solutions? Is there a motion?
No.
And is there a second? Did you get those?
Not the second.
The second is Lori Minor. So, Article 14, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,300 to Senior Solutions? Is there any discussion? Yes.
Hello, I'm Gloria Prestelli, and for several years now, I have represented Senior Solutions on the Advisory Council of Senior Solutions. Look around this room, if we don't see seniors, I'm not sure who we're seeing. And so, we do lots of, lots of work that's kind of hidden, but one included in that significantly provides senior meals. So, we do subsidy to make sure the senior meals are going out. And probably, you know somebody who's gotten some assistance from people, health visits and interventions where they need to be. So, please consider, it might be you the next time that needs to get some assistance from Senior Solutions. And Senior Solutions is really the age, Council on Aging, but we've named it Senior Solutions in Southern Vermont. Thanks.
Is there any other conversation, comments? Hearing none, we'll take it to a vote. On Article 14, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $750, no, Article 14 says, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,300 to Senior Solutions? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Article 14 passes. Article 15, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $750 to the southeastern Vermont Transit doing business as The Mover? Is there a motion? Lori, you're moving it.
I'm moving.
And, seconded, Annie Landonberger, seconded in it. So, Article 15, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $750 to the southeastern Vermont Transit doing business as The Mover? Is there discussion? Hearing none, you ready for the vote? All right. Voting on Article 15, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $750 to the southeastern Vermont Transit doing business as The Mover? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. The motion passes. So, I'll tell you, it's odd why I, I paused between that, but that is a narrow moment when people can reconsider. Something I will never, I don't think I will ever have the opportunity to do in, in my tenure as moderator. But there's a lot that you can do as voters to, to control your meeting, if you know Robert's Rules. And they're really interesting, if you're a wonk. Article 16, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $250 to the Historical Society of Wyndham County? Is there a motion? Beckley, and seconded by Gloria Prestelli. Article 16, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $250 to the Historical Society of Wyndham County? Is there any discussion? Hearing none? You ready for the vote? Article 16, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $250 to the Historical Society of Wyndham County? All of those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. And the article passes. Article 17, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,000 to the Groundworks Collaborative? Is there a motion? Brenda?
I'd like to take a motion.
But, yeah, great, I got it. And a second, Lori. So, it's been moved and seconded, that Article 17, shall the voters of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,000 to the Groundworks Collaborative? Is there discussion? Hearing none, you ready for the vote? All right. You're voting on Article 17, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,000 to the Groundworks Collaborative? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. And Article 17 passes. Article 18, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $2,000 to the South Newfane Community Association? Is there a, a motion? Meg, and Joyce. It's been, Article 18 has been moved and seconded, so shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $2,000 to the South Newfane Community Association? Is there conversation? Yes.
I'm new to town, so I'm just curious.
Tell us who you are.
Susan All. I'm Susan All, and I'm new to town, and I don't know what that is for, so I'm just curious about that.
Is there anyone here who can speak to the South Newfane Community? Go ahead. Use the mic and stand, be nice.
I'm Anne Gallop, and I'm the, also the treasurer of the South Newfane Community Association. We are the little old schoolhouse on the corner of Dover Road and Auger Hole Road. It's run as a community center. There are, Dan DeWalt gave a concert there last, this past Saturday. There are a number of different concerts that are held there. And the space is also available to people who want to use it for exercise, for rehearsal, pretty much for whatever people might want to do. It's just an available space. People have had birthday parties there, my son got married there. It's a beautiful old building that is just really beautifully maintained, so be available for anyone in the community who would like to use it.
Anything else? You ready for the vote? Article 18, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $2,000 to the South Newfane Community Association? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. And Article 18 passes. Article 19, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $300 to Brattleboro Area Hospice? Is there a motion? Gloria, and seconded by Tom Bedell. So, Article 19, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $300 to the Brattleboro Area Hospice? Is there discussion? No one wants to think about it. All right. Hearing none? Here's the vote. Article 19, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $300 to the Brattleboro Area Hospice? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. And Article 19 passes. Article 20, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,000 to Leland and Gray Education Foundation? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Meg, and seconded by Annie. So, Article 20, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,000 to the Leland and Gray Education Foundation? Is there any discussion, questions? Hearing none? We'll vote on Article 20, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,000 to Leland and Gray Education Foundation? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Article 20 passes. Article 21, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,850 to Health Care and Rehabilitation Services, HCRS? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Meg, and is there a second? Joyce. Joyce, Meg Spicer, and Joyce Van Pamerlin. So, Article 21, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,850 to the Health Care and Rehabilitation Services, HCRS? Is there discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote on Article 21, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,850 to Health Care and Rehabilitation Services, HCRS? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. And the article passes. Article 22, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $3,000 to Incorporated Village of Newfane Union Hall? Is there a motion?
Makes a motion?
Bob, makes a motion, we'll have you be the second. Bucky is the second. So, Article 22, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $3,000 to the Incorporated Village of Newfane Union Hall? This is Union Hall, for those who might not know. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to vote. Article 22, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $3,000 to Incorporated Village of Newfane Union Hall? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Article 22 passes. Shall, so, Article 23, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $2,700 to Morphe Free Library? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Who is that? Okay, Mr. Hall. Is there a second? Lim Bedell. Article 23, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $2,700 to Morphe Free Library? Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Just a minute. There is discussion. The librarian has something to say.
Thank you all for your consideration on this article. I would also say that we offer one of the few free spaces in town where if you have a group or want to hold a meeting, or start a cribbage group, or whatever it might be, if it's open to the public, please come and talk to me. It's a free space, as long as your program is free. Thank you.
Anyone have anything else to say? A previous chair of the Board of Trustees at Morphe Free Library once told me "free" is their middle name. So, there you have it. I think you're ready to vote on Article 23, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $2,700 to Morphe Free Library? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Article 23 passes. Article 24, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $4,935 to SEVeds? Is there a motion?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Is that possible?
Thank you. And so, Article 24, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $4,935 to SEVeds? There's discussion, and I do know that we have Mr. Beck here from SEVeds, so if there is no objection, we could hear from the source himself. Hearing no objection. Mr. Beck, you have the, the mic.
Hey, everyone. Thanks for having me today and for entertaining our article. We are the Regions Workforce and Economic Development Organization. And so, what we do is we really steward the entire region's priorities around workforce and economic development. And I'm leading with workforce, one, because it's my program area, but also, I think that, you know, people is what our businesses need most right now. And so, we run a number of workforce programs in our high schools, you know, with Leon and Gray, and all of the other high schools in our region, as well as adult workforce trainings for folks of all backgrounds, and most particularly, these days, with English language learners that are coming to our communities. And so, we also do a lot of business support. So, you know, the workforce is when, is one focus we always have. Unfortunately, we are also the folks who support flood recovery and disaster recovery. And so, you can note, you know, some of the businesses, and the number of businesses we've supported in, here in Newfane, both in just regular business support, but again, when something bad happens in our communities, and the state doesn't really know what to do in Southern Vermont, they call us, because we are at each town, on Town Meeting Day, throughout the year, visiting select boards, to understand what your priorities are as a community. And so, that's what SEVeds does and what your funds support. And I'll entertain any questions. Lindsay.
Is, is this funding also used by the BDCC? Is that the same?
The funding is not used by the BDCC. It is confusing. And so, what SEVeds does is it is a separate organization that allows us to think about all of our communities. You know, the BDCC is a commercial real estate business also. You know, that is separate from the work we're doing in communities. So, a good example is that, you know, the rent we get from our tenants is a very BDCC thing. But that any business in Newfane can call us for business support, that flexibility that we don't charge for, that's what SEVeds allows us to do. And so, if a new grant comes up, we do receive a lot of grant funding. Anyone who's written a federal grant knows it's a real pain. And so, what SEVeds allows us to do is to say, you know, what are we not paid to do, but will absolutely support our communities? And so, there's no, no one will give you a grant to write more grants. And so, one thing SEVeds allows us to do, and this funding is to say, well, we've heard that broadband is a huge issue across all our communities. What can we do in that area? That is, BDCCs won't take, you know, the rental income from their tenants to put towards that because of the way the organizations are. So, I work for the BDCC, but the work I do is guided by the priorities our communities set. And the time that we all take to meet with our communities, to learn, to do strategic planning based on your input, that's funded by SEVeds. Complicated, I know.
Walter?
Not so much questions or observations. It would be nice if your organizations and all of the organizations making your appropriation request would tell us what your request was for in the prior year, so we know whether we're being asked to increase funds or level funds.
Yep, yeah. And so, the thing I can say now is we ask $3 per person to every community that we serve in Southern Vermont, or in Wyndham County. We, that's our region, plus Weston, London Dairy, but that's, so every year, it's $3, and some folks change that up and down. But because we are a region that serves everyone, we hope equally, that's kind of where we start. So, it's $3 a year, every year, per person, per town.
Just as a point of clarification, that's based off census data?
Yes, yeah, so census data. So, we are using, we use old census data, because the most recent census wasn't actually that great, and we know that it did not do a good service to our rural communities. That said, the difference between the most updated census, I'm not, I'm not sure, but it is not substantial in, from a financial standpoint. I don't have that number, but we're talking like maybe Newfane has lost between 10 and 20 folks. And so, the actual implication of the ask isn't great, or it's not a large sum. Well, I can't, I am not allowed to recognize people.
Yeah.
Point of order to the question by Mr. Phelps, special appropriations for prior elected years are on page 20, so we can see what, how an ask can be made.
And I would point out that on page 150, our vital statistics continue to be, as Mr. Beck says, we're losing people. We had 14 deaths and only eight births last year. This doesn't look like the population that can do much about it, but talk to those who can.
So, I will say that, you know, growing, growing the population of all of our communities in I will say that, you know, growing, growing the population of all of our communities in, in a, in a, in a way that each community supports is very much a goal of ours. The unfortunate thing is that the more people you have, the more our $3 per person number will go up. That's something you can talk about in later years, but growing the population, you know, is, is a goal of ours so that it's more people supporting the same amount of taxes. And so that individuals, in theory, you know, will, will pay less for the things like our schools when we have more students in them.
Are there, yes?
Could you tell me, are the assistance you provide, is that just to businesses or is that also, like you say, nonprofits?
Nonprofits are absolutely welcome as well, yep. Organizations, not businesses, I'll say organizations doing things. Yeah, we have a bunch of different communities, so a town who wants to access, again, grants and funding that I don't understand, you know, federal programs to upgrade your sewer system or like technical building things, we have an entire program that can support towns at no cost to do that also. So municipalities, nonprofits, businesses, chances are we have something, someone who you can talk to. I hope we can help, but at least if you pick up the phone and call us, you'll get a human on the other line to do our best.
Would it be more accurate to say, rather than at no cost, but at the cost that we're, we're being asked to pay here?
I, I don't want to say that because if you did vote no today, we would still serve Newfane. And so, and, and I mean, I, and so that's, that's the only distinction I'll make is that.
Fair enough.
Yeah, the capacity we have to do our best very much is tied to the funds we raise. But if you call, we'll be there no matter what happens today, tomorrow, last year. It's our job to do this.
Any other questions or discussion? Yeah.
Hey, Eleanor Wilson.
Wilson.
I just wanted to say thank you for being here, for being so prepared. And what I just heard was a big chunk of community education for me. And so I'm glad that we aren't looking at things one by one. Thank you for what you said. But you're prepared and I'm excited. I think it's cool.
Thank you. I think I've been at the BDCC for eight years, and I think this is my fifth or sixth time here in Newfane, and so I, I enjoy being here also. So thank you.
Any further discussion? I think we're ready to vote. On Article 24. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $4,935 to SEVeds? That's not how you say it, though.
SEVeds.
SEVeds, SEVeds. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Article 24 passes. Thank you so much for being here. Article 25. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,000 to Restorative Community Practice of Vermont? Is there a motion?
So.
Susan All?
All.
All?
All, maybe it's spelled.
And I'm not saying it right.
All.
All, all, all.
Yes.
Okay. And Meg Spicer has seconded. So we're talking about Article 25. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,000 to Restorative Community Practice of Vermont? Is there discussion? Dan.
I'm the director of Restorative Community Practice of Vermont. I'm the director of Restorative Community Practice of Vermont. And I just want to thank the town of Newfane for supporting us over these past few years. And I want to report that for the first time after many years of working hard to make this happen, Leland and Gray is embracing restorative practice. So they're working with our organization, they're working with Up With People, they're working with another person that comes down. And they're working really hard to change the climate of the school so that we are not a punitive institution, but we're an institution that takes into consideration what people need to restore relationships and repair harm. So that's a really, really big difference, and it's having an effect on all the kids in Newfane that go to Leland and Gray High School. So I'm really appreciative of the town's support, and I'm very excited about what's happening in the world of restorative practice in our own school system.
Any other discussion? You ready to vote? On Article 25. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,000 to Restorative Community Practice of Vermont? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, and Article 25 passes. Article 26. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,600 for SEVCA? Is there a motion? Ken Estey has moved it, is there a second? Lori Minor has seconded. So Article 26, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,600 to SEVCA, is now open for discussion. Is there anything? Anyone have anything to say? Hearing none, will vote on Article 26. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,600 to SEVCA? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, Article 26 passes. Article 27. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,000 to Timson Hill Preschool? Is there a, a motion? Annie is moved, and Ken Estey seconds it. And we're going to discuss Article 27. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,000 to Timson Hill Preschool? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Article 27. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,000 to the Timson Hill Preschool? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, Article 27 passes. Article 28. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $2,675 to Valley Cares? Is there a motion? Ken and Bucky. Article 28 has been moved and seconded. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $2,675 to Valley Cares? Is there discussion? Yes.
Hi, my name is Sarah Ochberg. I'm a co-chair of Valley Cares. I'm not an official representative or anything, but your support's really appreciated. I know several of the residents personally who are lifelong citizens of Newfane, and Valley Cares provides a lot of services to help our elders. He's a big Canadian supporter, so thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, ready for vote. On Article 28. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $2,675 to Valley Cares? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, Article 28 passes. Thank you for that testimony. Article 29. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $800 to the Vermont Adult Learning? Is there a motion? Gloria, Gloria and Ken. Article 29 has been moved and seconded. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $800 to the Vermont Adult Learning? This is open for discussion. Is there any? Yeah, Gerald.
Okay, good morning. I'm Gerald Julian Seuss, and from Newf, South Newfane. And this is the first time that Vermont Adult Learning is asking for funds. So this is our first request. I am an employee of Vermont Adult Learning. I am the English Language Coordinator and Teacher, as well as Gloria Cristelli. She is also an English Language Teacher. And it is, our information is on page 129 in the town report if you want to look at it. But basically, we are a nonprofit education organization that we have served thousands of adults ages 16 and older since we started in the 1980s. Excuse me. We provide education for adults who may need help with math or literacy skills, on-the-job, personal growth. We also provide for young people who have not graduated, or for anyone who has not graduated from high school. We provide the GED tutoring and testing. We also do high school completion programs. I'm a former Leland and Gray teacher, so I know that not all of our students can make it through, you know, graduation. They have special needs, they have a different style of learning, so we help them with that. So also, we work with our new Vermonters Education Program. And this is where, in Brattleboro, many refugees have moved into the area, over 175 people. And we work with helping them develop work skills, language skills, get them out into the community. They may not be living here, but they are working in Brattleboro where many of us are using services from businesses and so forth. So we, some are in the healthcare field, some are in the manufacturing field. And what I'd like to just share with you is here in Newfane, we have six residents who are using our services, which are all free. There's no charge to anyone. And then we are currently working with about seven former Leland and Gray students to help them on their education path, to get a high school diploma and move into career opportunities. So we have figured out, we have a price, we're only asking for $800. But overall, over the course of working with someone, tutoring, helping them get through a program, the fee actually comes out to about $3,000 per individual that Vermont Adult Learning covers. We are funded through state and federal programs, but we need additional support. And we are making this request to the other Wyndham County towns, so not just Newfane. So, any questions? Thank you very much for considering this.
Okay, thank you for telling us about it. Since there's no other discussion, we will vote on Article 29. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $800 to the Vermont Adult Learning? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, and Article 29 passes. Article 30. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $100 to Vermont Green Up? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Who said so moved? Mr. Hall and Bobby Lischfield seconded it? So we have Article 30. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $100 to Vermont Green Up? Is there any discussion? Gloria.
Green Up Day is coming soon, and I was driving down my road and noticed different kinds of flowers. Some are yellow and green and pink, and all of those aluminum cans don't belong there. So Green Up Vermont, the, the state does one day a year. We trust that most people are trying, those who are not throwing the trash, are trying to do this 365 days a year. But it's vital for us to keep Newfane beautiful, vital for us to keep the roadside beautiful. If people don't want the beauty of Vermont, they could move someplace else. So the $100 that goes to Green Up Vermont goes upstate. We get all of the Green Up bags free, all of the advertisement free. So you'll be seeing advertisements coming out fairly soon. I have been coordinating this for the last two, three half dozen years, I can't remember. But please, get a group, think about your roads, try to just, and if you do it early, that's fine. But the town crew will go out after Green Up Day and pick up the trash bags, so you don't have to worry about that. If you find tires, et cetera, still put them beside the road. So thank you very much, and I hope to see all of you out greening up. Thanks.
Are there any other? Katie, go ahead, please.
Gloria, could you answer how the general public goes about getting Green Up Day trash bags from you?
The Green Up, the Green Up Day trash bags will be mailed down, and they'll come to the town office, and then I will get them, and I will distribute them at the Newfane store and out at Dutton's and at the town office. So probably within a week before, you can pick up the trash bags. I'll have a sign-up list, just so that I know where they're going out. I'll also have Green Up bags at the Williamsville Hall and at the South Newfane School. So you can get the bags and take as many as you think you'll use. They send us a certain number. And then if we find, we try to separate out metal, things that can be recycled, and there should be clear bags for those. So does that answer the question?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion about Green Up? Hearing none, will vote on Article 30. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $100 to Vermont Green Up? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, and Article 30 passes. Article 31. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,000 to the Williamsville School Preservation Society? Is there a motion? Ken Estey, and seconded by Meg Spicer. Article 31. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,000 to the Williamsville School Preservation Society? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote on Article 31. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,000 to the Williamsville School Preservation Society? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, and Article 31 passes. Article 32. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $720 to the Wyndham County Humane Society? Is there a motion? Ken Estey is making a motion. Lori Minor has seconded it. Article 32. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $720 to the Wyndham County Humane Society? Is open for discussion. Is there any? Hearing none, we're ready to vote on Article 32. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $720 to the Wyndham County Humane Society? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, and Article 32 passes. Article 33. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,000 to the Women's Freedom Center? Is there, Ken Estey is making a motion, and Tom Vidal has seconded it. So Article 33. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,000 to the Women's Freedom Center? Is open for discussion. Is there any? Hearing none, we'll take it to a vote. On Article 33. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,000 to the Women's Freedom Center? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, and the article passes. Article 34. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,660 to Youth Services? Is there a motion? Meg Spicer moves it, and Gloria Cristelli seconds it. Article 34. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,660 to Youth Services? Is open for discussion. Is there any? Beckley.
Does anybody have specifics?
I think.
About what these services are?
I think somebody does. David.
I'm not directly involved with it anymore. I was on the board for 25 years, and it's a pro, it focuses on programs that are addressing basically unmet needs. It used to be with younger children, but that's been addressed better within the state. So a lot of the work is geared towards children entering adulthood, providing them support and services that they can't find within their own family often. And also restorative justice. We have a large restorative justice program and also dealing with. a large restorative justice program, and also dealing with substance abuse. I think that covers the scope of it, but not specifics. And not on the board anymore, but still helping.
And there's also the report in the, in your, in your town report. Yeah. All right. Any other discussion on youth services? I think you're ready for the vote on Article 34. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of $1,660 to Youth Services? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, and Article 34 passes. Article 35. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of $250 to Wind Art? Is there, does anyone move Article 35? Ken Estey, Gloria Cristelli. Got a team. Article 35. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of $250 to Wind Art? Is there any discussion? Hearing none?
What is it?
What is it? There's a question. Is there anybody who can answer that question? What is Wind Art?
Page 133.
133.
123.
Is there anyone here who can speak to it? If not, I'll let you enjoy a little silent reading.
I think that was to help the animals for, for those floods or something. I think it came out of a library.
Yeah, it's something that, um, Lindor's.
It is the Wyndham Disaster Animal Response Team on page 123. Hearing none. We'll vote on Article 35. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of $250 to Wind Art? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Article 35 passes. Article 36. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of $1,500 to Wyndham County Safe Place? Is there a motion? Lots of motions. Ken, and then Susan All. So Article 36. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of $1,500 to Wyndham County Safe Place? Is there discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote. Article 36. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of $1,500 to Wyndham County Safe Place? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, and Article 36 passes. Article 37. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of $3,000 to the New Fane Anew Community Volunteer, Inc.? Is there, Ken Estey, and a second? Is there a second? Geraldine has seconded it, so I will read it again for discussion. 37. Article 37. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of $3,000 to the New Fane Anew Community Volunteer, Inc.? Any discussion? Yes?
Walter French, Lost Mile. Reading the report, I was surprised to learn that there's a publication that goes out to all New Fane residents. We've only been receiving the town report now for about 10 years. I was also interested to read some of the other papers. But I would just suggest that if they're using mailing lists to try and get to all the residents, they use the one that tax part of you.
Jane, did you want to say something?
Hi, my name is Jane Douglas. I live in South New Fane. I'm one of the directors for New Fane Anew. We publish a newsletter at somewhat random because of COVID. We did one for, I believe, last fall. Another one will be coming out hopefully in May. It's not constant. We do mail it to every PO box or every mailing address in the town, so. But New Fane is more than just the newsletter. We're also looking at using this building here for music concerts and jam sessions. I believe they're talking about doing them twice a month. We also do, hopefully, some concerts on the common if it doesn't rain all summer. So we've got a lot more going than just the newsletter.
Jody French, also Lost Mile Road. The post office does not deliver to Lost Mile Road, and the most conveniently located post office for our household is a West Dumberston box number. But we've been in New Fane since 1999. Is there a way to ensure that residents who can't get mail at a New Fane zip code, simply be commute for radical, get added to the list for taxpayers?
Well, it's, yes, you can get added. If you send me your email address, I'll email it to you. We also put extra copies in Dutton's and in the library. I believe there's still some in the library right now, as a matter of fact, yeah. So we realize, because you get a bulk mailing license, it just sends to everybody in the post office. We can't afford to send them to every post office in Wyndham County, so. But yeah, if, I believe, get one from, from the library, and it's got an, and.
Get your email address.
Yeah, it's got an email address on there. Let us know, and we will email. I email them to several people, so we'll do that. Hopefully, it won't rain, and we'll have concerts.
Another question?
You have another question, Walter?
Your brochure revenue last year was $3,000. And your expenses were $1,500?
It's $1,500 for each publication, but that doesn't include costs, like if we're going to have to pay for renting the hall, things like that. So it's more than just the newsletters are cost.
No, looking at the bottom, it says you took in $3,000. $1,500 was your expenses.
It was more than that. I'm not sure who came up with the.
Looking at it, it seemed a little strange, because according to this, it's still at $1,500.
Oh, yeah, we don't, we were, during COVID, we went into the red, unfortunately, so. Publication costs are very high.
Any other conversation about New Fane Anew? Hearing none. We'll vote on Article 37. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of $3,000 for the New Fane Anew Community Volunteer, Inc.? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Article 37 passes. Article 38. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of $1,000 to the New Brook Parent Teachers Organization? Ken and Lindsay. And is there still food left?
There is still food. There's still coffee.
And, and that should all go home in a little while. So Article 38. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of $1,000 to the New Brook Parent Teacher Associate Organization? Is there any conversation?
I would just, I would just like to say thank you for continuing to support us. We like doing fun enrichment things for kids, and you all make that possible. So thank you. We made our fundraising efforts. Go for it.
Great. If there are no other comments, we'll vote on Article 38. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of $1,000 to the New Brook Parent Teachers Organization? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those who are opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Article 38 passes. And thank you again to the Parent Teachers Association for feeding us today. Article 39. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of $500 to the New Fane Cemetery Association? Susan has, Susan All has made the motion, and Annie Lannenberger has seconded it. So Article 39. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of $500 to the New Fane Cemetery Association is on the floor. And if nobody's going to pick it up, we'll just vote on it. Are you going to speak about it?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
I, I, I'd like you guys to allocate $500, because the Civil War soldiers up on the Hill Cemetery are falling onto the road, and if we don't take care of them, I don't know who's gonna. So we're, this summer, more than money, we need volunteers. And we also are very open to selling new lots up at Woodlawn, and we're also going to have a cremation section up at the New Fane Hills, the Hills, you know, cemetery, Hill Road Cemetery. And anyway, I urge you to get involved with the dead people. Because nobody's going to take care of them if we don't. And also, the dude that gave the common to New Fane, you know, his, his grave has fallen apart and everything, and, you know, I'm grateful to him for giving us that common, and so I want to take care of him, and I hope someday somebody takes care of me. Thank you.
Where's, where's, where's the guy buried who gave the comment?
Park, Jonathan Parks?
Yeah. Where's he buried?
He's, well, it's debatable now. The guy that, it's vault up, because a lot of the, you want to come to our meeting and be on our board? We need people on our board, because, you know, we're not getting any younger. Right, Robert?
Yeah.
In New Fane. He's buried in New Fane.
Thank you. Dead people are so entertaining. 30, Article 39. I think we're ready to vote. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of $500 to the New Fane Cemetery Association? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, and Article 39 passes. Article 40. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of $500 to the West River Valley Mutual Aid? Is there a motion? Gloria Cristelli has moved it, and Mr. Mondavi, Mondavi has seconded it. And I'll read it again. Article 40. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate $500 to the West River Valley Mutual Aid? Is there any discussion? They're fighting over who's going to speak.
But he's still not buried with.
West River Valley Mutual Aid became part of New Fane because of COVID, and the most that you probably remember us for is the Everyone Eats program that came out of the church, and we served the West River Valley during COVID, up to, what, 18,000 meals that we, more than that. So when the COVID money ran out, or when CARE Act money ran out, or when money ran out, and Everyone Eats stopped, those of us in West River Valley Mutual Aid who were, Gerald and I did a lot of the work together, said, you know, we can't let people who don't have food go without. So we decided on a last mile project. So the board and others interested in West River Valley Mutual Aid began this program, and sort of from one week, having nothing, we joined in with Townsend Food Shelf, and we combined some of the efforts with Veggie Van Go, which we had been doing through the church and getting out to other people, so boxes of fresh vegetables and anything that would come from the food bank. So it's pretty much combined now into, once a week, we are hiring, we have hired elderly person who's a little bit older than I am, so I can say that, in Townsend, who goes as far as South New Fane and up to Valley Cares and up and around. So I think he has, what, maybe a 50-mile route at least, and he picks up senior meals that we do here at the church on that Thursday, gets food from the Townsend pantry. So we call that the Last Mile Project. We're serving, I think, about 30, 31 people right now, households in the valley, and we're rapidly running out of money. So we're asking New Fane to support us, because we do have residents not, you know, you're not going to get $500 worth in a week from New Fane. But we certainly do have needy people who don't have transportation. These aren't people who just say, oh, I want to sit home and put my feet up and have you feed me. They're literally, some of them probably are living on about $600 a month. So we would just appreciate this. We do apply for grants. We received a grant. Is that correct, Kate? Yeah, so I think we've got a grant, not we as West River Valley Mutual Aid, but through the food pantry in Townsend. So did you have more to say on this, Gerald? Thanks. But anyway, please, please, for the sake of others.
There any other discussion? Hearing none. Take a vote on Article 40. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of $500 to the West River Mutual Aid? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Article 40 passes. Article 41. To transact any other business that may come before the town. This is all non-binding business, because it hasn't been warned. This is my chance for us to congratulate you for staying all this time, and your chance to bring up what's on your mind. Yeah.
On behalf of the select board, we would like to thank you for your years of service and how you have guided us along the way. I have learned personally so much on how to be the meeting from you, and I, on behalf of all of us, would thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to make room. I think we all need to think about making room for younger people. And I'm just going to get out of the way. Yeah.
I was asked, bucky pelsu, New Fane, I was asked by the Grace Cottage Foundation to bring to your attention if that needs to be done. I think that through the various public hearings that they have held, that you, most of you probably are aware that they're undergoing a rather large fundraising effort to expand the medical facilities at Grace Cottage Hospital, which are sorely needed. Here on the stage, I provided an information sheet that is addressed to you, the neighbors of Grace Cottage, providing some more information on, on that effort. And given my connection through family with Grace Cottage Hospital, watching, having seen it grow and expand, and remembering a conversation I had with my father-in-law, who was a founder of the. who was founder of that institution, I asked him one time how long it's been a financial challenge in keeping Grace Cottage going. And he said, since August 7th, 1949, the day it was founded. And so it's no different today, except that the size of the asks are substantially greater because the needs are substantially greater, the growth that we've seen in the area. So I would encourage you to take one of the information sheets if you're not fully apprised of what is going on there at Grace Cottage. They have received a $5 million challenge pledge from generous donors. And a part of this ask is to meet that pledge so that they can receive the amount that was donated through this pledge. And I simply would conclude by asking you, to the extent that it is possible and for you to do so, to help in our effort in keeping Grace Cottage viable and sustainable. Thank you.
Anyone else have something they want to bring up under other business?
I'm Bill Gunther. I live up on Bench Mountain. And I want to make my annual thank you to our wonderful road crew. And I'm glad Jay's going to get a little bit of help. Right now, we're dealing with our fifth mud season so far. And the boys do a really good job. I still live up there with a two-wheel drive car, and I get up and down the mountain. But we're really blessed to have some really hard workers. They do a great job.
Ken Estey, Newfane. And also, just looking at, what is it, 165th Annual Town Report? Is that what it says on the front? So thanking the Select Board. I mean, how many budget meetings did you have?
A lot.
A lot. When did budget season begin?
Beginning of November.
So November 2023. All the way to now?
Pretty much.
Yes. So thank you for all of that work because, I mean, it's week in and week out, just plugging away, just chipping away all the time. So thank you for all of that. And also to Winetta. Winetta Pauling, the administrative assistant of the Select Board. Because Winetta being the point person for collecting all of the reports, yes? And all of that information and getting that all put together and getting it to the printer and getting it back from the printer and getting it to all of us. So thank you for doing all that. So when I'm looking at that report, I'm thinking of you and the work that you've done to make that possible. So thank you.
I'd just like to say that the report and all the work that we went through today would not have been possible without all the work of our treasurer, Melissa Brown.
Annie Lannenberger, Newfane. I do know we need to attract more young people. And to that end, I'd love to see a small group get together in an ad hoc way to talk about how we might get more young people at the town meetings. Do we need to offer childcare? Do we need to offer food? Do we need to have it at a different time? Because I look around, a lot of you look like me. Thank you for being here, Emmett, and all you other young people. But we're getting pretty old and we need to replenish. So could we talk about that sometime soon?
We can't leave until we adjourn. That requires someone to make a motion and second it and vote. It's not debatable.
Can I make that motion?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? There is a second. All those in favor of adjournment now, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no? You're free to go.
Thank you, everyone.